...of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any public comments this evening?
Hello. Thomas Tempesty, this is my first time here.
Just tell us your name and your address.
Eight Apple Ridge Road, Unit 6.
Okay.
I have a question about the trash. I realize I missed some of the meetings about this.
Okay.
I have a 64 barrel. We have small kids. We fill it up every week. I see the policy says that we have to put $4 on 32 gallon barrels. And so my logic would be, I'm willing to pay $8 on a 64 barrels, but I called the company and they say they don't pick up 64 gallon barrels. And so that means I have to throw away my 64 gallon barrels, buy two 32 gallon barrels, bring them both of them out every week. I don't know if this was option was considered, but I actually one of them, maybe few, who agrees with increasing the price stickers. I think it's a good idea, but it would make my life easier.
I can tell you that in my backyard, I have a 64 gallon barrel that does me no good. And I had it for 10 years back there. I use it for, you know, bees and compost stuff. And I had it, I was taking my trash. And when the sticker program started, they told me they weren't taking anymore. So I have two smaller barrels that I use every week, similar.
It's the same cost.
Yeah, yeah, same cost. But they don't, perhaps Justin could tell us why they don't take the larger barrel?
Yeah, part of the reasoning behind that is if you look at the rules and regs, you're to sticker the top item on your barrel. The machine actually picks up the barrels. So abuse can happen with the larger barrel where if it's not caught in time, you could have multiple bags over the limit of the weight required by our rules and regs. So typically, the reason there's a 32 gallon rule in place is because it's a one bag or a two bag system. You can't really abuse it. So you can have as many 32 gallons as you want, or you could use your 64 gallon to transport your bags and place them on the curb side. But the rule's in place so that the actual driver doesn't have to put their hands into a barrel for safety concerns, because there's needle sticks in this world today. And it is a situation where we don't contract the Ohio Harvey to make decisions at every portal. The rule is in place and set in stone is equal across the board. So that's why.
They used to be hit out about too much.
The rules have been in place since the 90s. Unfortunately, they haven't been enforced properly, and it's based off of the dual contracts for solid waste.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments? Okay, Kate, how are you?
Good.
Pleasure to have you with us tonight.
I am here with folks as well to do a...
Couple proclamations to make. So Lauren. Want to go first, or you want to go second?
I'll go second.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. So we have a proclamation in order of Lauren Bell for her hard work with the menorah, setting the first one, lasting, beyond every year. And it says, whereas Lauren Bell has repeatedly demonstrated selfless devotion to the mission of inclusivity amongst his community and neighbors in Maynard, Mr. Bell simultaneously orchestrated the first annual menorah lighting in Maynard, including the installation of a donated menorah displaying veterans' memorial in the park. Whereas the menorah traditionally celebrates freedom and community worldwide, now extends another single manor's welcoming and diversity. Now, therefore, we demand the board selectmen offer our congratulations to Lauren Bell for his accomplishment and gratitude for his contribution to the county mayor, given in the selectman chambers the 7th of January, May of 2020.
And Lauren, I'm here for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the House of Representatives to have a hereby known to all that the Mass House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Lauren A. Bell in recognition of your creating and orchestrating the first annual menorah lighting in Maynard, celebrating diversity, community, and the holiday season. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses a hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, including this, which I hope will be an annual event. Thank you for everything you did to make this happen, Lauren.
Thank you all very much. Hey, I just wanted to, I know I sent this in an email, but we all have personal reasons for doing things we do in the community. For me, my wife summed it up on our way down to the menorah lighting when there were 150 people standing there. She turned to one of my little boys, my three-year-old, and said, "Your dad did that for you. Do you see that? Your dad did that for you." So that's my personal reason. But more broadly, you know, when we talk about inclusion, it seems to be like a cultural thing, like, oh, that's a leftist, or whatever it is. You know, inclusion for my kids means that every year, and for every other Jewish kid in town, and every other immigrant in town, when we do inclusive things for immigrants, like improved translation services for town residents, it means that they feel valued and they feel loved. And that hopefully translates to them becoming more engaged in town, feeling agency in this town, feeling ownership, and wanting to make this town a better place for everyone. So it is for the town that we improve inclusivity in town. So thank you all again very much for all of your help.
Okay, so we're going to, Lauren, have a public hearing that is scheduled for 7:15. So we're going to open that hearing, and I'll open it by reading the legal notice. And it says, "The notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138 as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January 28, 2020, at 7:15 p.m. in the Michael J. G. Otis Meeting Room at the Maynard Town Building, 195 Main Street, Maynard, Mass., on the application for a new retail restaurant license on premise for malt and wine alcohol beverages, as a common victor license for Fine Arts Theater LLC, doing business as Fine Arts Theater Place Manager, Will Coler, at 19 Summer Street, Maynard, Mass., and a copy of this application is on file with the office of the selectmen." And so now at 7:17, the public hearing is...
Thank you, Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, I was talking to Becky earlier, she tried to...
Did you introduce yourself first?
Sorry? I apologize. I'm Steve Trumbull. I'm the owner of Fine Arts Theater Place.
I'm Will Coler. I'm the general manager of the Fine Arts Theater Place.
I apologize. Becky told me to keep it short, so we're going to do that. We didn't, we wanted to get this to you, but we didn't get it to you because we didn't realize all the time I've been in Maynard for five, six years, we had to get it to you by Tuesday. We have applied for beer and wine license. We want to let, you know, you know, okay, what our plan is, and we're going to leave this for Becky so she can take a look at it at your leisure. I think it's important you read it and what we plan on doing. It's very important that we keep the theater, okay, a community, family-run, okay, what we're trying to do. It's all about family, the theater, I think you realize that system we've opened. We've had a lot of requests from the adults about, you know, we're going to have beer and wine. It's not a liquor license, well, it's alcohol, but it's a beer and wine license. And probably what we're going to, you know, what we're going to do here is, okay, is make it simple, okay? We're going to, if, we're going to only, we're going to limit it to two drinks per person, okay? We don't want to turn it into a restaurant or a bar or somebody, it's a destination for somebody to come, you know, people coming and get a buzz on. That's not what we want to do. People want to come in, they want to enjoy the theater like they are now. I think we're all aware that people are really enjoying the theater. I hope they are. And, but we don't want to have a destination where people can come and get drunk or drink. That's not what we want to do. That's why we're going to limit it to two drinks per person. And how we're going to do that, I'll make sure, because Willis had the idea, we're going to have a scanner. So we're going to scan everybody that buys a glass of wine or beer, okay? So if selectman Galvin comes up and he's already had two beers, I'm going to say...
He already did.
I'm going to say, "You can't have another one." Because that's what we want to do, okay? It's not, we're not trying to do a family, we don't want to get away from that family that we've started and we want to continue with. So that's how we're going to do as far as two drinks per person. We also know those managers there that have to be, they're going to be running the back in the, as far as handing out the liquor. We know that's only 18-year-olds can actually pass out the liquor. We're well aware of that. And at night, or when we're not open, we have a, we have a plan for a padded, for the freezer. It will be padlocked, so nobody can get into it. And there's a lot more to go over, and I, like I said, I think Becky wanted to make it short because she didn't want to be here all night, have you here all night. And Will, what else am I leaving out, please?
Previously, we had come before the board of selectmen to seek a liquor license. An addition that we have made since then is we have security cameras throughout our facility, so in the outside chance that something were to arise, we always have, you know, we can't always go back and, you know, see what might have hap, what it might have transpired to provide, you know, any offices that might need information, we can provide that information to them of what might have happened.
The police have used our cameras when we had a couple robberies in the town, they came to us, because we have cameras inside and outside, which was very helpful to them. And we have followed the direction what the police chief wants here.
Sorry, Will.
To Steve's, to answer what's, or to mention on what Steve had just said, the fire department had requested that at least two people per shift are crowd management certified. I looked into that after he passed that along, and it's a precourse that I'm going to require all staff is just, in general, crowd management certified, rather than just having two people on at a time. It's going to be everybody. In addition, there's, the police department had asked that we have somebody standing by the exits when movies end, to make sure that alcohol is not, you know, alcohol is not leaving the facility. So that is another addition that we'll be enforcing as well with the, with the policy.
And also tip certified.
So it's a requirement, but all, everyone who's going to be handling alcohol, or sorry, beer and wine is going to be tip certified. As of now, I became tip certified online, just as a, to come before you, so I had that certification. Becky had requested that we do an in-person, and that in moving forward, we will have, even myself, will all be, everyone who's going to be handling will be tip certified in person, because there's the kind of thing of being able to see a fake ID and whatnot that we want our staff to be able to experience in person.
I, to wrap it up, we're going to ensure, okay, the community may, that we're going to do the same thing we've always said we're going to do, to put the community first, put the, and put the theater first, and making sure, okay, not to keep going over this and believe her or on it, that it's a community theater, not a place to go and, you know, get silly and have five or six drinks. It's not going to be allowed. Two drinks, period. That's all you can have. And nobody's going to serve alcohol unless they're 18 years old or above. There's always a manager on staff, okay? There's always 21 years or older. We also walk down the aisles now a minimum of one night, I mean, once every screening, that's when something requires, like old-fashioned. We make sure people are not using the phones and not being disturbed. In the proposal here, we're going to walk down twice, okay? Just to make sure there's no issues with, you know, any nonsense going on. All we can tell you is we'll follow the rules and regulations that, you know, we're supposed to be doing, and we won't let you down in this. Any questions?
Do we have questions? Yeah.
I do.
Go ahead.
No, I did not. I trust you, because you've...
Thank you. We've done what we said we're going to do.
Yeah, and you've been around for now a long time.
We had our anniversary, David, last month, five years. It goes by fast.
It does, and I think the entire community appreciates what you've brought back to Maynard, and, you know, it's been a wonderful addition. My question for you is, you know, I think movie, the movie experience has changed since, even in the five years, I think there's a lot of places now that serve alcohol, so it's not a...
Absolutely.
And I don't go to those, those places that serve alcohol. So how do you prevent somebody from buying alcohol that's over 21, going into the theater and giving it to somebody who's 16?
Good question. I'm going to let, we went just to, hey, we went to, well, Will did, I had him go to O'Neill's, you know, everybody knows the new theater, O'Neill's. And he went there with his fiancee last week, and I said, "I want you to, I want you to experience going there, seeing a movie, and what the, you know, how they handle the alcohol, as well as AMC, who does that as well." They have alcohol, not just beer and wine. And I will tell you, I will tell you what happened when he was there, his experience.
So they were very careless with, I feel like I looked fairly young. I was not ID'd. My fiancee's younger than me, she also was not ID'd. We were able to get our alcohol and head right into the theater, and no one had checked the theater once. I think that's going to be what, that's part of what Steve had mentioned of doing the two checks per theater, going up and down, up and down the aisles to ensure that, to monitor inside the theater. But that's also why we're going to be doing the two-drink policy. If you come up and get two drinks, you know, I'll be able to tell that from my scanner. If you come up again, I'll be able to see if you've previously been in the theater and, you know, if you came up five minutes ago, it'll tell me, "You just scanned, I was just, I just scanned you five minutes ago." So that's how we will, you know, that scanner will assist us with being able to ensure that you didn't just go hand those drinks off and then come back out.
And David, to be honest with you, because I appreciate you saying that, trust me, we've known each other for five years. I don't have a perfect system if you come in, okay, with somebody younger, okay, and you pass that drink to them. I, you know, I'm being honest with you, we don't have a perfect system for that. It's just to try to watch and go up and down the aisles and make sure it's not happening. So I don't want to sit here and tell you we have a perfect plan for that. Everything else, I think we do, David, but for that, we don't, because, you know, of course, it's possible, okay, we, you know, that somebody could come in, I could bring somebody in, or Will could bring somebody in, okay, and slip them a drink, okay? We can only get one at a time, or they could share it. But to answer your question directly, David, I don't have a perfect answer to that.
So I got a quick question for you. One of the reasons why we go there with my family is because of the experience that you get in an old-fashioned theater. We go to O'Neill's, we go to AMC and all that stuff. We go there for different experience. The experience that we get going to Fine Arts is that old-fashioned feel. Somehow or another, by adding alcohol, I feel like it's going to take away from that old-fashioned feel. That's just my take. And I understand you might have a reason why you're asking for it, because from a business standpoint, I would say, and probably you're saying that, you know...
Well, selectmen, it's not just a business, it's not just a business because the gross revenue from it is not going to be overwhelming, but we've had a lot of, because we've had a lot of requests, because every, because other theaters, okay, we're trying to compete with, okay? Even though it's old-fashioned, I love old-fashioned. I love the theater, okay? And we try to keep it, we keep it clean, the prices, but we can't compete because you can go to O'Neill's, you can go to AMC, Rego's going to do an outdo liquor. And so they, you know, we have a lot of patrons saying, "Can you at least get beer and wine so we can have a glass of wine or a beer?" And so we've had a lot of call for it. And it's, it's not just about the money, it's because we're trying to make sure, okay, that the customers, okay, that come in like Justin, or anybody comes in, "Can we get a drink?" You know, well, we don't do it. O'Neill does it. AMC does it. And so we weren't going to do it last year. Remember when I applied for liquor license, we decided, you know, we didn't work out anyways, and we thought about it, and we waited a couple of years before we even thought about it. And the demand for, to answer your question, has been pretty high. And we're just trying to compete with the other, with the other theaters.
So my question is just, actually, I, I actually go to The Strand also, which is another small...
Love The Strand.
It's a great little...
Love The Strand.
It really is. And it kind of feels the same, almost the same way, because they do serve beer and wine. I don't...
Beer and wine, no liquor.
Yeah, so it's just beer and wine. So, and I think that we could probably learn, you know, you could probably take some of their tips too, because it's the same type of thing, where it's a family theater. There's a lot of, you know, there were a lot of kids around, there were a lot of young, young people. So, you know, I think that it's kind of best business practice at this point. It sounds like you've laid out a lot of it at this point. But I do kind of think that this is the way it's going.
We're trying to do our homework.
Right. And I do think, like I said, I kind of compare Fine Arts to The Strand in that way, except for there's just no alcohol, which that doesn't bother me, but I would absolutely, I think that it would be, it would be an addition. You come before us several times for individual liquor licenses, you know, two or three or four times a year, and I feel like I don't think we've ever had any problems with those events in the past.
Well, those are from like OR and those, and we've never had a problem. We always make sure, it's, you know, we've never had an issue, and we're pretty much on it. And that was also a way to us to show you all, okay, that, you know, we're not going to fool around with this, and we're going to take it serious. We're not, I'm not going to put all this time and effort and the money into the theater, which we have, and a reputation on the line for a glass of wine. But we haven't touched base with this, Trent. I think that's the next idea, and we will.
What are you, what are you going to scan? You keep, you've referred a couple of times to scan.
There's an app I've, it's a free app that you can download. It, you can have, it gives you five scans, so you can try it out. It's called B&amp;C Stats ID Scanner. It's essentially a mobile app that you download on your phone. There's a free version that you can sample it, and I've sampled it with one of my staff members' licenses that was underage, and then I sampled it with my own. And when I scanned his license, it immediately started buzzing and flashing, saying, "Under 18," or "Under 21." And also then I scanned my license, and it said, it gave me a green light and approved. And then I scanned it a few, a few minutes later, five minutes later, and it gave me a red warning, saying it had just scanned five minutes prior.
But we thought, we were talking about scanning how many beers are they going to have.
So that, that's our way of monitoring the, it'll tell me every single time that the person had, that ID had scanned.
Individual license.
So if you come up to get, let's say you come up, you get a beer when you, when you want to go to your seat, and you come back and you get another one, if you come for a third, we're not going to give you one. That's how we're going to track it. We don't want to turn the theater into, you know, a bar. That's all. We just don't. We're making it up on popcorn. We don't have to make it on alcohol. We're just trying to make, we're just trying to, like you said, we're trying to, you know, for the adults that come in, with their children, or, you know, they ask a lot for a beer, "Can we get a glass of wine?" We don't have it, and they get disappointed.
Justine, to your point also, I did speak with the general manager of the Arlington Theater and also the Somerville Theater, Ian Judge. He was a huge help when we opened initially, and he, they were, I believe he said, the third or the fourth movie theater in the state to be able to serve beer and wine. And he had mentioned that the, a big thing for them is the two-drink limit. It ensures that the, that it's not a...
A drink.
...area that people go to get intoxicated. It's a, enjoy a drink with, you know, your movie. So we did, we did speak with a smaller theater.
We want to make it, we want to make it as comfortably quick for you to consider us, because I think two's enough to go to a theater. You don't have to have three or four or five glasses of wine or five beers to go to a, to watch a movie. Want to do that, you can go across the street and have a drink. And that's why we presented the two-drink minimum.
Maximum.
Maximum. Sorry. Sorry. Are there any other questions for us?
So does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments that they'd like to make in regards to this public hearing, in regards to the liquor license for Fine Arts Theater for malt and wine beverages? Nobody? Okay.
I go to the Fine Arts Theater, probably try some up, and would love to have a glass of wine.
Thank you.
Especially when I'm watching trolls.
That's good. That's good.
So we're not, there's no motion here to...
There is. So number two is motion to approve the general...
Who's the motion? Oh, way down the bottom, okay. So there is a motion to approve the general on-premise wine and malt beverages at Fine Arts Theater LLC, doing business as Fine Arts Theater Place, 19 Summer Street, Maynard, Mass., 01754, with manager William, Willard, I'm sorry, Willard Coler. Give a second.
Second.
All's in favor? All right, good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for trusting us.
Thank you for the work you put into it.
Yes, big time.
We'll continue that.
All right, so it is now 7:33, and I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All's in favor? You in favor of closing the hearing?
Yeah.
All right. 7:33, Becky, we close the public hearing. All right, we're back to correspondence. We have a set of minutes to approve, and the minutes are for the meeting of January 7, and I make a motion to accept and approve the meeting minutes of January 7, 2020, as shown. Give a second.
Second.
Thank you, Almond. Any conversation, discussion about the minutes of January 7? All's in favor? Three, and I'm out, Becky. Correspondence items. We have A through N tonight, and I make a motion to accept and approve the correspondences A through N as shown. A second.
Second.
Thank you. Any conversation about those multitude of correspondence items tonight?
I have a question about Mass DOT bridge. Do we know regarding the, the bridge replacement on, over Florida Road, do we know approximately how much or how many property owners to get that right-of-way easement, how much, how much money it will cost, et cetera? Or a ballpark, or whatnot?
Oh, how much money? So, yeah.
Well, there's five property owners that'll be affected.
Okay.
And we only have the 25% design right now, so we don't have exactly what it's going to cost, but we do have an article that we're going to propose to the board for, to town meeting.
For additional money.
Yes.
Wait, beyond what was already proposed in the budget message?
No, no. It was in the budget message. Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
But some property owners may donate, too.
Yes. Well, because I feel like we had a conversation a long time ago, like a year ago, about this type of thing, and it seemed like they weren't sure how much land was actually going to be needed, so, and we still won't know that right now.
Yeah, we're still working it out. Some will be temporary easements, some will be permanent takings, and we have, like I said, we have the 25% design that kind of lays it out, but we're hoping to get more specific as the project progresses.
Okay.
Anybody else, any other questions about A through N? All's in favor of A through N being accepted. Thank you. Next up is our two items of consent. Can I make a motion, we move to accept and approve the two consent agenda items as presented. Thank you. Any conversation about those? So George isn't here, so he'll just come and sign that, recall.
He'll come in. He'll probably be in tomorrow.
Minutes, all right.
And then Chris, was that, that was just a renewal on the...
Yes.
Because he had already, a reappoint, yeah, okay.
A reappoint renewal? Any questions about those? All's in favor? Thank you for... All right, we have an appointment request, an interview for the Historical Commission for Ann Gibson. Good evening, Jack. Can we just read the motion, and then we'll go through it? Make a motion to approve Ann Gibson as an alternate member to the Maynard Historical Commission, with a term expiring on June 30, 2020. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Hi, Jack. Good evening. Hello.
I'd like to introduce Ann Gibson, who's already been attending a number of the Historical Commission meetings, and let you folks have a chance to talk to her.
Hi there.
Hi, I'm Ann Gibson, and I live at Eight River View in Maynard.
How long have you lived in Maynard?
Since 2012.
Excellent.
I have two kids in Maynard Public Schools.
Perfect.
Well, you're joining the Historical Commission. First off, it's a very active, as I'm sure you've seen in the meetings that you've attended, And we've got a lot of history here that, that they thankfully have brought to everybody's attention over the years. What specifically drives you towards, what's your interest in the Historicals Commission?
I first became aware of the Historical Commission when, at the town meeting where we approved the demolition delay law. And so the commission has a role in the execution of that law, deciding whether a property is of, you know, historic value and, and implementing that delay. So I would like to be part of that because I really, I really think that that's a great tool for Maynard. I'm also a Concord Museum teacher and a licensed Concord guide. So as I've been developing my profession in sort of public history, I thought this would be a great thing to get involved with, with the town. I'm also a reenactor with the Stowe Minutemen. And I'm on a subcommittee of the Sesquicentennial Committee here in Maynard. So.
Which party?
That was a good transition.
See that? Sesquicentennial? Through there right up. The rest of you can't say it that good. I have, I have a question.
Okay.
As a Concord, as a Concord guide and historian, do you believe that the first shots of the American Revolution were shot in Concord or Lexington? This is a quiz.
That's just.
I'm just asking because it's Concord.
Well, what we say in Concord is that the shots at the North Bridge were the first shots under orders. And so that qualifies as the first shots of the American Revolution. But I have also volunteered in the historic houses in Lexington and so I'm very aware.
You're right in the middle.
She's treading the line.
Since Chris is a Lexington.
Yeah, that's why he's asking.
I grew up in Acton and the first person who was shot in Concord, Isaac Davis from Acton. So, you know, Acton has its place.
You gotta come up Mass Ave to get to Concord anyways. But anyways, no, all your, you know, historical things certainly make you
Absolutely.
more unqualified to be a part of our Historical Commission. And, you know, Jack's, under Jack's leadership, the Historical Commission has really flourished and done a lot of great things. We certainly appreciate, you know, your volunteerism and offering to get involved in that. So we do appreciate it. But we can have a little fun asking those questions.
It's a quiz.
Yes, no quiz. There are no quizzes. There's no wrong answers either, by the way. I think it's pretty funny how the two groups battle it back and forth, but.
I'm also involved in revamping the fifth grade Maynard Pride Walk, which goes through Maynard history. And I'm interested in the walking tours that we have of Maynard, converting them to an app format so you can follow it on your phone. And we may be able to do.
I didn't even know we had a walking tour.
Yeah, Peg Brown.
There's a number of them.
I didn't know.
And Mr. DeSilva, they are available at the library.
Yes. I've taken the Girl Scouts before.
Down below from the town website.
I didn't know. Sorry. My kids are much older. They, they must have started after they get out of school. I'll take my granddaughter's.
Emily's gone on those.
In a few years. Anyway, we do, I do appreciate it. We all appreciate it. But is everybody in favor of this appointment? We appreciate it so much and good luck with, good luck with Jack. He can get a little ornery sometimes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, when is our pre-ambulation?
What's what?
Have you rescheduled our pre-ambulation with Katie yet? All right, just checking.
Don't look at me. That's you guys.
I know. We thought you were going to come with us.
Yeah.
Yep.
Ms. Lauren?
Lori Kennedy, an MS4 permit. Welcome back. Have you been here before?
I have not been here before.
So where do you, but you've talked.
Usually Wayne represents Stormwater.
Well, maybe I, I might have seen you at an MAPC meeting or something like that, one of those.
Oh, you might have.
I might have. That's how we, that's why you went to me.
Oh, yes.
At MAPC and.
The Magic Coalition, yes.
Okay, so welcome. And I guess we're going to talk a little bit about the MS4 permit. So floor is yours?
Yeah, part of the reason we brought Lori in front of you is because you are somewhat aware of MS4, the regulations. Lori's going to highlight exactly what the process is, kind of where we are in the process. So when, you know, budget time comes, you understand why we're looking at some of the line items, what our responsibility is in that MS4 process. So I'll give it to Lori.
Yeah, and I have about 20 minutes of slides. So let me know if you want me to skip through anything. I'd also be happy to take questions from the board as I go. So as questions arise, please feel free to interrupt me and, and I'll see if I can address your questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I'm going to start with kind of general Stormwater 101 and talk about why Stormwater matters and how it impacts our water resources. And I'll talk about the MS4 permit, which is the general permit that kind of guides Maynard's Stormwater Management Program. I'll talk through what we're doing as part of that Stormwater Management Program and some of our upcoming MS4 compliance tasks. So when we talk about what is Stormwater, if you look at a natural landscape, when it rains or when the snow melts, it soaks into the ground and gets cleansed as it soaks through the ground. In an urbanized environment where we have paved surfaces, that rainwater or snow melt is washing off the surface, becoming runoff and taking with it all of the pollutants that have been piling up on those paved surfaces. They flow in an urbanized environment like Maynard, flow into the storm drainage system or what we also know as the municipal separate storm sewer system. So this includes our treatment facilities, like at the high school, the rain garden and storm scepters that clean the storm water. Includes our catch basins, our drain pipes and drainage manholes. And all of the runoff that's coming off roofs, driveways, parking lots, roads, that all, and also compacted areas like front lawns and things like that, flows into our storm drains, through our storm pipes and out to our water bodies and wetlands. And I want to point out that in some cities, like in Boston, they have what's called a combined sewer system where the rainwater and the sewage are mixed in one pipe and it's all carried to the wastewater treatment plant. Here in Maynard, we have separate systems. So your sanitary sewage goes in the sanitary pipes, out to the wastewater treatment plant. Your storm water flows in different pipes, separate pipes, go directly out to the water bodies. They don't go through a treatment plant first. So in Maynard, we're in the Assabette River watershed. Most of our storm water pipes actually empty directly into the Assabette River. And then quite a few of them also empty into upstream water bodies, our brooks and ponds or wetlands that are surrounding, or in the Assabette River watershed. And eventually that water makes it down to the Assabette, joining with the Concord River and in the Suasko watershed. So that storm water carries pollutants with it. We know that dog waste is a big issue. We've heard a lot about that around town. Also fertilizers, sand and soil from erosion, salt that we're using for ice melt, trash and pesticides, lots of other pollutants that are building up on our lawns or being washed off of our cars when we're washing our cars outside, things like that. And when that's carried directly into water bodies, that has direct impacts on public health, on recreation and on wildlife habitat. So in particular for public health, we're concerned about a rise in toxic algae or cyanobacteria blooms. In ponds, you might have heard ponds and bathing beaches being shut down because can kill dogs and can really sicken humans when they're exposed to it. Also concerned about bacteria making people sick. We're also concerned about groundwater contamination when rainwater carries those pollutants and infil, and if it does soak into the ground in filtration basins, for example, concerned about that contaminating our groundwater supplies. And in receiving waters, we're also seeing an increase in algae blooms and invasive plants like water chestnuts and sediment buildup from erosion. We're not just concerned about water quality, but also the quantity of storm water. So as you pave more surfaces, less of that rainwater soaking into the ground, more of it's running off. So you have more rainstorm water coming faster and that's overwhelming our drainage systems. So you get a lot more street flooding when those, that infrastructure is overwhelmed, can't convey that much flow. Also a rise in river flooding. And with climate change, as we see more, larger storms coming with climate change, we're expecting those impacts to be exacerbated. So the MS4 permit is, it's a federal permit issued by the EPA and it's under the Clean Water Act. And United States Environmental Protection Act, or Environmental Protection Agency administers this general permit for all of the urbanized towns and cities in Massachusetts. And basically what US EPA is saying is, will allow you, will authorize you to discharge your storm water to waters of the US as long as you follow these steps to clean up the pollutants that are being conveyed through your MS4 and discharged to these water bodies. So the first general permit for Massachusetts was issued in 2003 and Maynard's been covered under that permit since 2003. There is a new permit issued in 2018 with a lot more stringent requirements. And so that's why you're seeing a lot more activity around the MS4 compliance program since 2018. And in theory, it's a five-year permit. The 2003 permit was extended to 15 years, but we are, you know, anticipating or we could see another permit in 2023. Or it just could keep being extended like it was last time. So like I said, it covers the urbanized areas in Massachusetts and this is based on population density. So Maynard and all of your surrounding communities are part of this urbanized area as well as most of eastern Massachusetts. So you're not alone in this. The permit is organized by these minimum control measures, public education, public involvement, illicit discharge, detection and elimination, which means keeping non-stormwater flows from coming, coming through your storm water system. Control, MCM4 is construction site stormwater runoff control. And MCM5 is for new development and redevelopment projects for long-term control of stormwater pollution. And MCM6 is good housekeeping. That's pollution prevention for municipal properties and operations. So the permit lays out, it's a five-year permit, and every year there are certain requirements that need to be met to comply with the permit. Some of the requirements are annual, like, public education we're doing every year. Some of them are one-time, kind of develop a plan and then the next year it's starting to implement the plan. Some of them are incremental, like incrementally building a map of our MS4 system. And some of them also extend beyond the permit term, like finding illicit discharges and eliminating them from your system. The timeline actually goes out 10 years. So we're anticipating that we're going to just keep doing this and incrementally be getting better and better at keeping pollution out of our water bodies and protecting our water resources. So instead of going through the MS4 permit requirements in the abstract, I thought I'd take you through specifically what Maynard's doing to comply with the permit. And it's not every little thing that we're doing to comply with the permit, but kind of the big things and the things that are most visible and most impactful. So the Stormwater Management Program, this written program is available on DPW's website. And this spells out in detail everything that we're doing for the net, or planning to do for the next five years to comply with the permit and protect our water resources. So that's available for public review on the DPW website. And I also want to give a shout out to the MS4 team here. They work with a lot of communities around Massachusetts and this team is incredible, super collaborative and resourceful and knowledgeable and they really care about doing a good job. So it's a great team to work with and actually I'm very impressed with what they've been able to accomplish.
Thank you.
Sure. And shout out, shout out to Katie back there, who is our public education guru and just so enthusiastic and intelligent and amazing at creating these memes like, don't blow it. For don't blow your leaf litter and grass clippings into the road. Ways that the public can help prevent pollution because it's definitely not just the town, you know, government responsibility. It's on all of us to prevent pollution. So Katie's been great at engaging with the public. We've got a great website up on DPW, Stormwater page. So if anybody wants to learn about stormwater management, what they can do to prevent pollution, it's all up there. Preventing and eliminating illicit discharges. So illicit discharges are anything that's not stormwater or clean groundwater, clean water, essentially. There are some in the permit, some things that are allowed to be discharged into the storm drain that aren't stormwater. But for the most part, you just want only stormwater or clean water. A lot of what we're seeing coming out of stormwater pipes is actually sewage. And that's the biggest concern and that's kind of the biggest target for the illicit discharge program. We see sewage mostly from two, two sources, cracked sewer pipes that are leaking and intermingling with groundwater and getting into the storm drain that way. Or sewer laterals from buildings that should be connected into the sanitary sewer but are incorrectly connected into the storm drain instead. Sometimes we see floor drains. Sometimes we see failing septic systems that are also leaching sewage into the storm system. The other sources would be illegal dumping, spills and outdoor cleaning and maintenance activities that then are exposed to stormwater and are washing those pollutants into the stormwater system. We've actually been doing a lot of work this fall, inspecting the outlets of stormwater pipes, the outfalls, they're called, where they discharge into the water bodies. We've been going along the pipes along the Assabette and checking to see if there's any sign of illicit discharges coming out of those pipes. And that's an ongoing effort. We've inspected about half of them this year. We'll finish the rest of them next year. For construction sites and development projects, Katie again has been fantastic in working with Wayne and Justin and Bill on enforcing our bylaws that require stormwater management for development, redevelopment and new development projects. For town properties, the DPW crew has been amazing. There's more things that they're doing than I can list on this slide, but just some of the highlights, street sweeping is actually a really, really important measure to control the source of pollution because that's where you're seeing the most buildup is on parking lots and, and roads. So that's a way that the town can control those sources of pollution before they get washed out into the water bodies. So we're required to sweep all streets and parking lots, town-owned streets and parking lots twice a year. And more frequent has the effect of reducing the pollution and also reducing the amount of debris that's caught in the catch basins that we eventually have to clean out. So we don't have to clean as frequently the catch basins if we sweep more frequently. Then also just on-town properties, managing leaf litter and grass clippings, make sure those don't get into waterways, fertilizers, deicing salts, maintaining and cleaning around dumpsters and town buildings so the trash doesn't get washed into the stormwater system. And removing trash, trash from parks and trails. And then also maintaining the drainage infrastructure, so cleaning those catch basins so they function as they are supposed to, replacing and rehabilitating the catch basins and pipes and manholes on the system. We have several stormwater treatment systems around town that treat kind of runoff before they get into the storm drain. So at the high school, we've got several treatment systems that we inspect every year and maintain as needed. And we're also building a GIS map of the drainage infrastructure. Part of that is for managing illicit discharges and tracking them down if we see some signs of illicit discharge, but also allowing us to do better asset management and, and be more efficient and proactive in managing our assets. Any questions so far? I'm going through this pretty quickly. Okay. So some things that we have coming up, as I mentioned, there are annual requirements. There are, there are lots of little things that we're going to keep doing. And every year we issue an annual report that reports on what we've done the previous year. The permit year actually matches up with the fiscal year. So at the end of each permit year, we put together an annual report on what we've done the previous year. But going forward, we've got some kind of big-ticket items that are going to be pretty visible. Stormwater management bylaw updates. Katie has been working on this with the CONCOM. There are certain requirements in the MS4 permit that we need to update in the bylaw and that's actually a requirement of the permit, is that we update our local ordinances. So we're going to require low-impact development practices to reduce impervious area and be more environmental, have more environmental site design practices. We have more stringent water quality requirements, so requiring the projects to remove pollutants that are going to be discharging off of their properties. And more inspections during and after construction to make sure these stormwater treatment systems are built correctly and functioning correctly.
Would that be Katie or would that be the building inspector that would have to do that?
I think it would be Katie and Wayne. Is, that's how it's working now and I think that's how we envision continuing it.
The Conservation Commission is the authority that issues the Stormwater Permit. And the bylaw and the regulations, the regulations are created by the CONCOM. And part of that, there's a pretty intensive inspection, inspection schedule where usually, you know, engineered, either Wayne or their engineer and the CONCOM has to go through each step.
Okay.
Thank you. And so we're also looking at some other improvements that aren't required by the permit, but we think will help mitigate stormwater impacts in town and help kind of strengthen the drainage system, especially considering climate change impacts, requiring the use of more recent precipitation data, for example, instead of using outdated data that leads to undersizing of, of stormwater systems. And clarifying or improving what, what types of projects need to apply for stormwater permits. So that, we're hoping to have those bylaw revisions ready for spring meeting, spring town meeting. So as I mentioned, this fall, we were inspecting outfalls along the Assabette River. And for the most part, so we inspect them when it hasn't been raining. So we hope there's no flood. flow, because there's no stormwater. When we do find flow, for the most part, we've tested it and found that it's pretty much just clean groundwater or a buried stream that was converted into the stormwater system. But there are a few places where we found, we tested for bacteria and some other water quality parameters, and found that there's a chance that there's sewage coming out of those pipes. So DPW has started those investigations to try to pinpoint what are the sources of that contaminated flow, and just want to give you a heads up that, you know, if it turns out that the source is part of the public infrastructure, then that's going to maybe costly to eliminate those contaminant sources. Lastly, at the DPW garage and Pine Hill Road, where we have, well, DPW garage, all the operations there, and then Pine Hill, where we have some storage, looking at, we're developing a stormwater pollution prevention plan, and some of the biggest needs that we've identified so far are need to install better stormwater treatment systems so that we're removing pollutants before that stormwater flows into the Assabette or Taylor Brook. Where we have piles stored outside or other materials stored outside, either containing them or removing them and cleaning up those areas. And looking at the fueling station and bringing it up to modern pollution prevention technologies, both to protect surface stormwater runoff and to prevent groundwater contamination. With that, I would be happy to take your questions. Was I that thorough?
Great presentation. Quickly, you mentioned that there might be some need...
Cost.
No, cost is a separate discussion, but there might be some need for an upcoming, some articles for town meeting relative to the requirements under this bylaw update or whatever. Specifically, as briefly as you can, what types of impact would this be? And, you know, I don't want to have situations where people are panicking, that, oh, I can't do X, Y, or Z anymore, I can't wash my car, I can't do, you know. What are the, what are the types of things they should be looking for or we should be looking for relative to bylaw changes?
So the bylaw, the stormwater management bylaw only applies to projects that disturb, as it's currently written, that disturb over one acre of land, so are going to be doing construction on a large area of land, or that are going through special permit review under planning board approval. So it's not for just everyday activities.
Not for everyday individuals.
It's for these big projects that are going through permitting anyway. And basically what it says currently, and it's not going to be a big change, is saying if you're going to be building this big project, let's make sure you're controlling your pollution during construction and that you're mitigating those stormwater pollutants that in the long, you know, after, excuse me, after construction, your site will be generating because of all of those paved surfaces.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Otherwise, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I think it was very good.
Anything else? Questions? All right.
Thank you. Very thorough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Jeff.
Good evening. Good, how are you?
Good.
How's everything?
Good, just fine.
Okay. So we're talking about Maynard's canvas.
Yes, we are. So I'm here to seek endorsement for a continuation of Maynard's canvas, specifically putting a mural up in the basin on the retaining wall and the handicap ramp adjacent to Veterans' Memorial Park. Andy Moore line is spearheading this project. He couldn't be here tonight, he sends his apologies, so I'll, I have a command of most of the technical details, but if there are a few, he can get back to you.
Let me introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jeff Swanberg. I am chair of the cultural district and the cultural council. But there shouldn't be too many differences from the implementation from what we did two years ago with the murals that are currently up on Murphy Snyder to Gray's success, so we are not trying to reinvent the wheel, we're going to take the success we had there and apply it to that wall in the basin. A couple of the differences, the major one, which is why I'm here, is the funding. We hope to get this funded by a grant from Mass Development. And this is a creative placemaking grant that they have, and the way it works is we set a funding target, in this case, $15,000, and we attempt to raise half of that from the community. So it's through patronicity, it's similar to a GoFundMe sort of initiative, and basically from the launch date, which we hope would be sometime later this spring or summer, we have 60 days to raise half that money. If we're successful, the state matches the other half, and then we're good to go. If it looks like we're going to be unsuccessful, finding an extra $1,000 or $2,000 to get us over that limit so we don't lose that match would be important, but we can discuss ways we can do that as well. So it might be nice if the Board of Selectmen was ready in that case to donate $1,000 just so we didn't lose the $6,500 that we already raised. But we hope to be able to raise the $7,500 from the community itself and get that matching grant from the state. The state likes to have endorsement letters from the town, which is why I'm here, to seek that from you. We have them from ArtSpace, and I'll be writing one on behalf of the cultural district itself. For the mural itself, I'm sure we're all familiar with the retaining wall, this falls right in line with all of the redevelopment plans that we've seen for both Veterans' Memorial Park and for the basin itself, most recently from the Urban Land Institute when they had their site visit in December. All of those projects involve some form of public art, so we view this as hopefully a first step of redeveloping the basin and making it a more positive, an interactive place to be. The other difference is when we put out the call for entry, as last time, as you remember, we were pretty open on the specifications. We wanted to see what the artists came back, and we thought that was a great approach. We had a lot of high-quality visions from which to choose. We'll have a couple more specifications, not really specifications, but suggestions this time. We'll first of all give them images of the previous mural, so they can see sort of the theme that our panel last time enjoyed. And we'll also ask for incorporation of designs related to Maynard's history, so we can connect it to the Susquehuston Centennial Committee and our 150th celebration. The artists don't have to do that, but we'll certainly be more open to those designs, or we'll instruct the panel to do that. The panel will be chosen largely like it would the last time, one member from the Board of Selectmen would be invited, several members from the artistic community and the cultural council. The rest of it, we plan on copying as much as possible what we did before, power washing the walls, things like that. We've already reached out to the DPW, who has agreed to, you know, maintain traffic during the actual painting of the mural and help us out with logistics like that. We've reached out to the normal committees and boards, some of which, no negative responses, some positive responses, some suggestions from ArtSpace, from the Susquehuston Centennial Committee, and from the cultural council itself. And so I'm happy to take any questions you have on the project.
That was actually going to be my question, about whether or not you're going to open it up like you did last time, or you're going to have some kind of parameters, and what are you looking for, so that you answered my question from that standpoint? Because it'll be nice to fit into the historic, take some of the history into consideration.
Right. And what we don't necessarily want to see is the same history mural you see in every town over and over again. We want something that's a little bit more unique, and so we'll put that explicitly there, that, to incorporate elements of our history, but, and that's why we want to give them the pictures, the existing murals. So we view this as a comprehensive project rather than as an individual mural that's completely separate from the first two.
Is trying to visualize it, so is it going to be both the wall, so it's going to be that one side and then along the park?
We will, I think the main mural will be on the retaining wall, and we'll also encourage them, if you remember with the murals last time, there were several windows in that building, so the way they spaced the hummingbirds in between those was a creative use of the existing structure. On the other side, they had the pipes that they painted over that, but they had the windows on that one where they painted another window where Thoreau is popping his head out of that one. So we're going to give them that, the blank wall, and then we're also going to encourage them to look at some of the triangular shapes on the handicap ramp and even the ramp itself. If they want to submit a design just for the wall, they can do so. If they want to include those ramps and have some creative elements, they can as well, and it will be up to the panel to decide which vision they like the best in the end.
And are you working? I'm sure you are, but I just want to double check. So you mentioned the ULI and everything with that. So are you consulting with planning and ULI and everything?
Yeah.
Because I don't know what their plans are, so I just don't want, I want to make sure whatever we do was something that will...
So, and we've, Bill Nemser has been involved in this, as has Megan Zamato, and in addition, if you look at the ULI and earlier proposals for Veterans' Memorial Park, all of them incorporate some sort of public art on there. The only hesitation you would have is something was going to be knocked down, that retaining wall, but you're not going to do that after you already put the handicap ramp right up there. So you already have that, frankly, sunk cost into there if that was what you wanted to do. So we, you know, if you wanted to knock it down, you knocked down the mural, but that's, I think, a pretty low risk given the current development plans, and the current ULI plans don't look to knock down that wall right now.
As a point of clarity, the ULI was not a plan, it was a study.
Right, exactly. I just, I wanted to make sure that whatever, whatever we decide to move forward with, that whatever the mural is lasts, and it's not something that interferes with whatever that ultimate goal's going to be.
We discussed larger projects in Art Mobile, things like that, but the planning and the amount of time before the application was too great and would take too much coordination. So the mural is the reduced version of that plan that we think we have experience doing. It's relatively simple, it doesn't cause the need for any knockdown of walls or anything like that, so we want to get it up there.
To a degree, thanks for bringing the ULI up. So that was just a study that was presented to us, right? So it's up to us to kind of take that study and put a committee together, or how is that going to work?
Essentially, it's meant to provoke action, so, and this is potentially a result of that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's...
Provoke action or thought?
Yeah.
I mean, one would imply that we should be progressing towards our vision for the town, but I would also say that it'd be helpful to have the master plan approved first, and then we could see how that vision of the ULI kind of...
Ties into that.
So then to, so these walls are the walls that face away from the park?
Yeah, the wall is at a right angle to the main length of the park, and so if you, yeah, and then it forms a right angle with that handicap ramp.
Yep, okay.
My point, my comment would be, I am a violent supporter of this. I believe that public art is an economic generator and that, you know, it attracts people to the area and, you know, it's just something that I think people appreciate. I had the pleasure of sitting on the selection committee the last time around, it was a lot of fun to do it. I specifically remember voting for Babe Ruth. I don't remember if I voted for the other one or not, but it was certainly in the, in my range. I think I did, but there was a whole big, it was a big to-do about how we judge them, but I look forward to this. Thank you for bringing it forward.
So you were asking us to write a letter in addition to your letter?
No, I could, I guess, there's a couple of options, both of which I will draft. So I will draft a letter on behalf of the board and just say, per the approval of the board on the evening of January 28th, they endorse this, and then I sign it. Or I could, I could draft one, you know, with, like, your voice, and then could provide it to you, Chris, or another member of the board to sign it later. I don't have it drafted, so...
All right. I saw yours in there, so it's in addition to the one that's in the file.
That's what the...
I mean, does anybody object?
No, I mean, I thought this was the letter that was going to go out.
Oh, they, they're trying to double dip, so they're asking both from the TA and...
Jeff is trying to double dip?
Andy.
Andy, that's why he's not here.
Exactly.
That's why he stayed home.
Well, we also want to share the vision with you guys and get task approval as well.
Yeah, so if anybody doesn't, if no one objects, please write the letter and then sign it on our behalf.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
I'm fine with just the letter, I'm, I'm fine with the letter you have.
Do we need to roll on this?
I make a motion to offer a letter of support of the Maynard as a canvas grant application. Do a second, okay? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for working.
Thank you.
All right.
Cannabis manufacturing discussion, Mr. Johnson.
I think you have to...
Make a motion, make a motion, so make a motion to request the Town Administrator's Office to begin negotiations with High Beams Botanicals to develop a host community agreement. A second.
Second.
So, Mr. Chairman, per usual, Assistant Town Administrator Megan Zamato has been, you know, managing any potential HCA's with the town, so I'll let Megan take it.
Sure. Well, I'd just like to introduce Rebecca, she's the founder and CEO of High Beams Botanicals. And she has met with myself and some of the other staff in the Office of Municipal Services. She has also met with the Economic Development Committee, which is kind of our new policy to encourage interested applicants, meeting with that body first, prior to meeting with the board. So she had a successful meeting there, and she's interested in bringing her cannabis manufacturing business to the town of Maynard. You know, if the board wants to entertain this, it will be our first host community agreement with a manufacturer, so it'll be a little bit different. But, you know, we have models that we can look at, and, you know, I've already spoken with Attorney Federoff about it, so we are prepped if the board is interested in moving in this direction. So Rebecca?
Thank you. What are you asked to make the P R L screen? If not, no worries.
No, I know what you're saying.
Thank you, thank you. I'm Rebecca, and just a little bit about myself. I'm a medical software designer by day and a cannabis entrepreneur by night. I started my software design career at Harvard University, designing their library, academic library portal system. I'm now the medical and life sciences practice lead for a design firm based in California, and I do work for Thermo Fisher Scientific, Roche Medical, the Mayo Clinic, amongst others. So my...
Two more seconds.
Sure, okay.
That's a great presentation.
Thank you.
That was scary.
Yeah, that was scary.
My, the business that I'm hoping to start here in Maynard, again, is a cannabis manufacturing business, specifically in the form of cannabis-infused beverages and cannabis-water soluble technologies. We're called High Beams Botanicals, and let's see if I can click away.
Now, can you?
Thank you. I don't like this, not to be... Okay, so just a little bit about my company, so you know what we do, what the idea is here. So we understand that if cannabis is ever going to be a major player in the everyday social lives of people, that it's going to have to stand up to the age-old tradition of a drink.
That's okay, guys.
It worked, it worked, it worked, okay. So a little bit about the cannabis sort of playing field of products that are out there right now. There's cannabis flower, there are edibles, which can come in the forms of chocolate and gummy bears and all of these fun things. We're a little bit different in that we understand that when people consume an edible at times, it's difficult to control the experience. They can often sort of overdo it because they're not feeling the effects right away, and so they take another nibble of that bite of chocolate, and then it turns into not such a fun experience. So the goal of High Beams is to change that and to make it much more akin to the experience of having a beer or a glass of wine, in that you feel the effects within five to 10 minutes, and it goes away within an hour and a half, and you can control how much you're consuming and how that feels to you. Also, we take a lot of pride in the types, other types of ingredients that go into the beverages, so understanding that consumers have a high expectation now in terms of what they're putting in their bodies. So all of our ingredients are going to be craft ingredients, quality ingredients, and will be placed with care. So the idea, health marries pleasure in the form of cannabis-infused beverage. We know that cannabis is mainstreaming, so 45% of millennials are now actively consuming cannabis. The demographic is rapidly changing, everyone from baby boomers to the can of curious are understanding and beginning to consume cannabis now that it's legal in a social way, and the stigma is leaving, leaving the building. Just a little bit about my process, because I think that this is important for you to know, as a manufacturer, I'll be using processes that are actually... cannabis. The demographic is, is rapidly changing, everyone from baby boomers to the can of curious are understanding and beginning to consume cannabis now that it's legal in a social way, and the stigma is leaving, leaving the building. Just a little bit about my process, because I think that this is important for you to know, as a, as a manufacturer, I'll be using processes that are actually similar to manufacturing an alcoholic beverage, but without the alcohol. There will be, there will be zero alcohol in our beverages, but if you walked into the mill building, which is where I'm hoping to be, house my manufacturing facility, you might see stills. This is the name of my beverage line. The, the second part to my business is that beverages in cannabis require, cannabinoids are not water soluble, so it's an oil that's sort of extracted from the plant, which makes it very difficult to mix with water. And I've created a novel technique for a water soluble cannabinoid, which I'm currently having patented, and part of my business will be manufacturing water soluble technologies, not only for myself, but perhaps eventually for other kinds of businesses. I have, part of my marketing plan will be events-based. I'm coordinating, collaborating already with Art Space Maynard to enlist artists to help me create events in and around the Boston area that will promote my brand. I'm working with Jerry Beck to actually hopefully sit on the board of Art Space Maynard, and I have a vision to, I studied architecture and always wished that art was viable financially, and part of my vision as a brand is to help give artists a financially viable means of living by producing their work. Regular tour requirements, this stuff is no joke in the state of Massachusetts, and there are, as you've seen so far come through here, very specific rules and regulations about the process in general, and it is of utmost importance to me to be in 100% compliance, because I'm not interested in losing my business because I haven't properly followed the rules. Where I'm at in the process, I'm before you, so I'm hoping to begin the negotiation process for my host community agreement. I, as I've said, I've had several discussions with the mill building, with Christaboe, and have even tentatively picked out a space there. The mill building is perfect for me because I can start small and scale up and grow with, with the building itself, and as I understand, some other cannabis businesses might be going in there that I could collaborate with, so, and plus, it's just a gorgeous space. I, I love the mill building, my son went to Knowledge Beginnings in the mill building, so it's, I would love to be there.
Christaboe's the Lisi agent for-
Mm-hmm. So, just a little bit about the market, we know that cannabis is expected to be massive in this country in terms of a revenue market, and beverages specifically are expected to take about 20% of that market. My vision is to become a national brand, and these are just some, a little bit of numbers about my financial model, which is interesting to you because you get some of that if we can successfully negotiate a host community agreement. And that's it. I'm, I'm here also representing my business partner, Patrick O'Grady, who would be our Chief Marketing Officer. Questions?
Rebecca, can you go back to the final, please?
Yeah, sure.
May I?
So this is assuming that I can get into about 25 dispensaries by the end of year, year one of full production, and would, my growth is projected, would be projected to continue with, let me say that again, I'm projecting my growth along with the growth in Massachusetts, which is, the market in Massachusetts is, is expected to hit about 1.8 billion by 2024 for cannabis.
Did you say, and excuse me if I missed it, did you say you were a Maynard resident?
I'm not a Maynard resident, I'm a Concord resident, but I service my part, you know, it's the only theater I go to is the Fine Arts, and like I said, my son went to, Maynard's very familiar for me, so I'll tell you why-
But you don't like trolls.
Yeah, it's funny, yeah, no, I don't care for trolls.
My question for you, there's a couple of them.
Sure, of course.
First one would be, are you intending to have a retail establishment?
I'm not, no.
You're not, okay, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
The second question is, have you, my hangup is that you have a location before a host community agreement is negotiated.
Okay.
And, so that's, we've experimented in another direction, I am the one person who opposed it, I still oppose it, and I violently oppose it.
Can I ask what you oppose specifically?
Why, yeah, because I think that the town should have an understanding of where things are going to be and how it might impact us.
It's so interesting that you say that, because other towns are requiring a location before-
Well, that's what the state wanted, and that's generally the way it goes, and we were the first to do it in our way.
Yes, which I think is amazing.
And by the way, your process did explain that, because that's exactly how you're doing it step by step.
So I, you know, I'm happy to see that you're, that you're looking to follow the rules that were set forth by the Commonwealth relative to having an established location. So before we, you know, my opinion would be, before we enter into a community host agreement, that you have established that location, so that would be great.
Yes.
And it sounds like you, that's where, the direction that you plan on going.
Absolutely, so I, I think what I hear you saying is that by the time the host community agreement is finished in negotiation, that the location is secured.
Correct.
Absolutely, that's the plan. It has to be that way for me, because when I submit my application to the state, I have to have a location-
Right.
Along with my host community agreement.
Yeah.
That's the plan.
Okay, so you're, you're not planning on selling anything there, it just would be like, that would be where you would make this product?
Exactly, yes, and what would happen is that I would transport from the mill building to dispensaries across the state. So what that would require, for my projections, is a loading dock and a couple of vans.
And that's, that's between you and the, the mill, because, you know-
Exactly. But I'm not looking at parking problems-
Yeah.
Or traffic, or anything.
And that's why, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you're on board with me, so.
What, what about the security for that? I'm unfamiliar with that, as far as, especially with the-
Yeah, I'll let you know, the state requirements are very strict about security.
Even for manufacturing?
From the moment the, so, so of course, my entire facility has to be under, under video surveillance, and every hallway that I transport, that someone is walking a case of my beverages out to the vehicle, has to be on video surveillance, and my vans, inside the vans have to be under video surveillance, so it's no joke, yeah.
We can, similar to the other host community agreements and the licenses applications, we can have a department at the police chief-
Yeah.
Approve.
Upgrading the screen.
Yes, yeah.
How many employees would you have working there theoretically? I mean, I, I'm sure, I know this is a startup, or it's virtually, so initially it'd be just the two of you, I guess, whose picture's rough.
Exactly, I'd love some help with the transportation piece of it, so I'm looking to hire a couple of employees for the transportation part of it, and as well as my products may be, need a runtime of more than nine to five, so I would, not being able to be there myself or my business partner, would, I'm, I'm looking at one to two other employees that would assist with the manufacturing process.
Let me ask you this, how, this drink stuff is news to me, you know, I didn't know.
You've got to go to California, they have it up there.
To devise, to, to, to implement it, to make this, how much water usage is there?
Um, it's, it's, it's a great question, it's a complex question, and it's not a question that I have a complete answer for you yet, because I'm still defining my manufacturing process.
Okay, because, because water, availability of water for Maynard is a concern relative to-
I understand.
You know, our, we don't have our DPW guy here, but relative to just the availability of wat, how much water we have.
Okay, I would be more than happy to meet with someone like the woman that presented earlier, to understand that.
It's not wastewater stuff that I'm worried about, I'm worried about actual-
Sorry, I meant, I just meant a water expert in the town, and I'd be happy to share my findings with you-
Yeah.
During the process.
I think that's important to us relative to the host agreement, because now we have to worry about how that impacts our, our water availability for our consumers, our residents.
Yes, I understand that, and let's be clear, I'm a small business.
Oh, I get that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm, I'm anticipating that this is going to become a widely successful-
Well, let's hope. I'm happy to have that conversation and return my findings to you.
And, and your type of business, based on what I know, it's one of the first ones that are going to be-
Yes.
Coming on, in Massachusetts, basically.
Yeah, there are very few in the country because of the problem of the water solubility of cannabis, yes.
And, and to the point of water supply, we've been keeping the mill people informed about as to our own water issue, which is not right now an issue, but with our-
Challenges.
Next week, you'll hear from Justin, and he'll tell you about, if the mill were to be 100% filled, where, right now it's only about 50% filled, then would our water supply be able to meet those demands, and Justin will be able to brief the board on that.
Yeah, and one other thing to add, Attorney Federoff has worked with some other communities that have had some water challenges in this space, and they've come up with some creative solutions, so we've, we've discussed it briefly, and I think we can continue that.
I'll connect with you guys in a minute after.
Is this considered recreational, or is it considered-
It is. It's considered recreational, and actually, for that reason, the limitation on the dosing for single-serve bottles is very strict. It's considered, so there can only be five milligrams of cannabis per single-serve bottle, which is considered a really manageable dose, we'll say.
So, I'm interested in this, what, does it get flavored? I mean, what, what the heck does it taste like?
Yeah. That's a-
He's going to have the first bottle.
Next meeting that I come to, I'll bring a sample.
I don't know, I have to drive home, you know, it's not that kind of stuff.
I'm exploring, I'm hoping to launch with three different flavor profiles, one that's more citrus-based, one that's more urban spice-based, but all of it, picture a carbonated drink that is complex in nature, and that just, you know, tastes amazing and makes you-
He thinks it's going to get hot.
Well, no, if you bring it, I'll be driving it two miles an hour, I'll get home, I'll be shoving my, you know, potato chips in my, in my face, my wife will wonder what the hell I was doing.
Compared to an oil, because how is this, 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 you know, Mexico, you mentioned that.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you, can you-
Because when you said cannabis, you could mix, you could make it into an oil.
Yeah, yeah, you're extracting oils from the plant, yeah.
Are you extracting this then, from the plant, and this?
It's complicated.
With a syringe.
It's very complicated, and that's why you really don't see cannabis beverages. It's, it's a tough problem to solve.
So actually, that, that would lead to my question, I just thought of one, is, would the, would you just be handling the, the oils? Would you get the oils already, or would you have the plants that you would need to extract the oil?
So, I will have no growing whatsoever, I am looking to get raw flower and do the extraction process myself, because I want to ensure that it's a completely natural, non-toxic extraction process. There are, you've heard in the news, questionable practices out there, and I want to ensure that my beverage is safe, so that's how it would be coming in.
And so, and you don't anticipate any kind of odors and things like that?
Actually, I do not anticipate any odors for a couple of reasons. First of all, because of the low dosage requirements for a single-serve beverage, the, the actual amount of cannabis flower that I need is actually quite small, especially at any given time in the facility. And then, there are modern technologies now that abate any odors that will come from cannabis manufacturing or growing facilities, that I'm looking into, should it ever become a problem. Yeah.
Could I, could I step up?
Hello.
I just wanted to comment on, yes, yes, I just wanted to comment on-
This is Kate Federoff, our legal counsel.
Hello, thank you for having me. So I wanted to comment on that. What I typically do in host community agreements for the more passive uses is I build in an odor mitigation plan requirement, so that you can look at and have peer-reviewed and odor mitigation plan, so to ensure that there's no kind of seepage, two things. But the, one thing I wanted to make sure that the viewers at home, because I heard you say that part of your business plan involved, and it was like, kind of servicing or events of the drinks, but that's not going to happen here in Maynard, is that correct?
No, that's not the plan.
We're just limited to manufacture here.
That's exactly right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so I want to draft.
So, assuming there aren't any other questions, before we actually vote on this, I'd like to put an amendment to the original motion that was placed out there, that the, the motion to request the Town Administrator's Office to begin negotiations with High Beams Botanicals to develop a host community agreement contingent upon the, the security of a location by your business, and that's appro, that's acceptable to you?
And that is by the end of the negotiation process? Sure.
The agreement would not be able to be approved by the board until such time-
Ultimately, right. Absolutely, I'm totally fine with that.
I think what we've done in the past is, this is just kind of giving us the okay as staff to start working with Kate and the applicant, and then, when it comes to you, it's, you know, I'm hearing it loud and clear that the board, you know, that you would like to have the location in there.
That's me.
Okay. Okay.
We've had a vote on that before.
Sure, okay. But, so the location piece wouldn't, we don't need to know the location today to start working on it.
Yes.
But it sounds like some of the board members would like the product that we come up with to include a location.
Correct.
So, if we, if it gets to the point where we can have a developed draft without a location, we can provide it to you, and then the board can decide whether to accept it at that time, or we can continue to work if they, if you don't accept it, when she does in fact have a confirmed location.
Yeah.
What other chemicals or substances involve in this process? And bring, speak to the process. Everything that I use is a completely natural process, and what are they? So, that, that would involve the other botanicals that I will be infusing in my drinks, such as elderberries and hopland berries and witch hazel. Water, and, and water, and cannabis water, and that's it.
There's no other chemistry?
There, another part of the, one part of the chemistry that I'm looking at involves the use of ethanol, which is a great free alcohol, yeah, but that doesn't end up in the, it can't, by law, I can't have alcohol in my beverages, yeah.
You should know statistics about baby boomers, it's like, that's based upon people who actually supposedly use it, so that could change, you could find out that baby boomers could be 80%.
That's probably the fastest-growing market segment in cannabis.
All right, Mike, you're taking us way off track, way off track, way off track. We're just, we're just talking about any-
You could drive the vans, by the way.
All right.
We need to talk after this.
All right.
It's the town accountant key.
So.
He doesn't even tire.
Cameras in the background.
I have a question. So, so Rebecca, what you, what you're saying is, it's really not going to be reach here, you're not going to be selling any cannabis to anybody or anybody in the town, which is a mandatory fact in the plan?
Yes.
Okay, so, it's not like other people apply that in the county?
There's no public-facing side of this at all?
Okay.
Yeah, except a sign.
All right. So it's just strictly manufactured?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, motion has been amended by David. Did you capture that, Becky?
Does that, does that make, is that allowed?
Yep.
I mean, I, I think it's allowed, but I just want to make sure the wording is, we're giving you permission to work on a host community agreement, though.
Yeah, that's all we're giving, permission to work on it, and so let's come back to us for ratification and everything.
Can you be clear what the amendment is, just so we make, make sure?
The amendment is that the contingent upon a location being, designated a location being identified.
Final approval contingent upon.
Yeah, which-
So I don't know, I don't, not sure if you need to amend the, the motion in that case, because the motion is just to enter negotiations.
Right.
Because you don't have to approve it based on what you're saying. Right.
I guess, my thought is, I don't want to coming, I personally don't want to coming back to the board unless there is a location established by the time it gets here.
We told Megan, she knows.
So the, the motion is to allow my office to even begin negotiations?
Okay.
Correct.
In taking the feedback.
But I want to make sure it doesn't come back here.
Of course.
And we get, well, you know, they're working on it, we just want to get it done, and whatever, and if the board wants to- And if the board wants to reject that, I want that on the record.
When do we reject?
They're rejecting that we do not have a location established.
Tonight?
But when. You can just vote.
We're weeks away.
Not tonight, by the time that it comes to us.
All right, so, we're just voting to allow Megan and Greg to enter into negotiations on the HDA, and we'll come back to us for approval if it doesn't have a location.
So, has anyone seconded this?
We didn't second the amendment, so we're gonna vote on the original motion.
Okay.
So, the original motion is still in play. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thanks.
Take my clicker.
Thank you.
Code of ethics. Let's discuss the ethics. Good evening.
Good evening. Alex Castro, Town Council, here to discuss something a lot less fun.
Oh, we can make it fun.
My pleasure. So, Mr. Chairman, as to further introductions, as you know, Kate Federoff, Labor Counsel, Marijuana Counsel, all-around team player. Alex Castro is new to the firm, but he's been working with us and Kate as well, in negotiations and other matters. And this is, this is something that he's really taken a lead on.
Okay.
I'm super relaxed, because I'm only supposed to introduce him, so.
Oh, nice.
And zippy the lippies.
I find that hard to believe.
Okay, so. In addition, as a little background for the public's awareness, the board had requested the town administrator and legal counsel provide recommendations to address some concerns of the board regarding conduct on behalf of town officials. And so, Alex and the rest of the firm provided the documents you see in the packet. I do want to add that Alex provided a slightly updated version today, which he can reference with the differences.
Okay.
The main difference in the revised version than the one you have before you is that it really kind of circumscribes the authority of the board, in that it can't exceed its jurisdiction, that essentially that the code of ethics will apply to the board and all of its appointees, or those who you have authority over. Aside from that, there's no real material difference between that and the draft you have before you. A little bit further background, we have actually implemented this policy in one of the towns we represent, and are currently engaged in enforcing it through the enforcement process that you have before you. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or any concerns, or even any additional comments as to what you want out of this policy, I'm here to answer.
I agree that we need a policy, or if the policy is acceptable, but I have some concerns about some of the specifics in this particular enforcement process.
Please.
Specifically, the first one, probably the one that hits me the most, is right at the end, where it talks about the penalties, or lack of compliance and enforcement. Second and last paragraph in that.
In the enforcement, in the code of the enforcement process?
In the code.
The code.
It's 18, compliance and enforcement.
Yeah, number 18. The last, second and last paragraph where it says, you know, if the board or appointee had violated the code, blah, 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 blah. And then it says that penalties may range from a letter of reprimand by the board, to a censure, to a request for resignation. All of those I agree with, but, or to removal, I don't think our charter would allow for.
No, it would not. It would not, and again, that language is included because this applies to the board and all of its appointees. There's nothing in this policy that requires, that would allow someone to remove an elected official.
Correct. And I did not want to override the recall that's outlined in our, you know, we as a board cannot override the will of the voters. Voters can vote to recall if that's what they choose to do, so.
Understood. And just so you know, this is currently playing out with someone else we represent, with a member of the board. And it's clear from the policy, or at least in practice, that the removal and that sentence is off the table.
Yeah, okay.
So, it's more that if we, for a board that we appoint, you know, just because you're in a cultural council, but, sorry, you're just there, I saw you, that's what I thought of.
Like a double dipping?
But it's one of those that we could, if it was, if the violation was severe enough, we could remove them from the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's not a chartered position.
The removal process would work for an appointed board person, but not for the board of selectmen.
Correct.
That may be saying the.
I can, there's already, there's already some language, I believe.
We can clarify, yeah.
And I just want to make that point clear, that the removal is not of a member of the board of selectmen, but, you know.
Or a school committee, or.
Well, that's generally, for this whole policy, it applies just to us and our appointed board.
Correct, correct. And again, I'm happy to also insert some additional language. There's already, there is already language stating that the charter, you know, the rules control, but I'm happy to insert additional language in that paragraph specifically, to alleviate your concern.
This board, when we establish a policy, and this board rolls over, and then an interpretation years from now is made, or, you know, determining, oh, we have the authority to remove a member of a member, and I can just foresee, and, you know, it never happened with us, but you never know who sits in these chairs, and you get somebody who is considered to be the rebel, and the other four don't like that rebel, and they vote to dismiss when the residents have voted that person in, and they should have the ultimate authority.
I'm dealing with a very similar situation right now, and your point's well taken. And I will insert additional language, making that clarification.
Okay. The other observation I make is, again, you don't view these things from the viewpoint of who we sit with today, or whatever, but of potential. I think that this, going back to page one, that it gives too much authority to the chairman, in that it says the chair at his or her earliest convenience investigate to further determine. I don't believe that, you know, again, you could have a personality conflict that needs to somebody to make a decision that says, well, screw it, my investigation says, you know, look at what's going on in the national politics. I mean, and then bring it to a level of here. And then, you know, and then it says, if the chair determines that there is sufficient basis upon which to determine that a member of appointee has violated the code, that's one person making a decision that affects the entire community. And so, somehow, what I would, as I was reading through this, as I was thinking to myself, perhaps we develop an ethics commission, and I hate developing committees, because we tax so many people in so many ways, but that should there be a violation that is brought to the attention of the board, it turns over to an independently selected group of people that makes a determination, independent of the politics of the board sitting here, that decides whether or not it rises to the level that the board should take it up as a, that's the way I would envision something like this. Otherwise, relative to ethics and standing by what we're required to do, I have no problems whatsoever in putting that into code and establishing the expectations of what we are as a board of selectmen. But the two points that I was concerned about were the removal, which I think you've addressed, and the power of the chair to make these decisions as to how to move forward with a particular.
We just make, wherever it says chair, would be the board.
No, if it's the chair, if it's the chair that the allegation is against, and then it goes to some other member of the board, based on the way I read it.
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, wherever it says chair, it should be the full board, is what you're saying. Not, it should not be the decision for any one person. It should be a.
Well, that's.
Just like we talked about earlier, it should be a decision for the group.
That's the gist of it, but I even think that if an allegation is made against a member of this board, and again, thinking 10 years down the road, when you get a group of people, and there's one guy that acts like me, that everybody, you know, says.
This guy's been drinking that marijuana water.
That, no, that this one, that one person, for whatever reason, the rest of the board is at odds with, and they find something to go against them, and suddenly, the four other members are voting to dismiss this guy order, to embarrass them, but they can.
But you can't dismiss it, you can't remove it.
No, you can't dismiss, but you can censure, you can do all these other things, and virtually embarrass that individual, just because they decided to do it. And I think that there has to be some protection for the individuals that sit on this board down the road.
Yeah, maybe if I could just address that briefly. First, I would just point you to the language in section 18 that says, in the instances where the chair appears to be in violation of the code, any remaining member may act in the chair's place as far as the enforcement process is concerned. One. And two, in the enforcement process, the chair does take a lead in the investigation, not, of course, of the allegation made against the chair. But what the chair does, and I think it makes more sense to speak about this practically, because it's playing out right now with another client, is that the chair is made aware of the complaint. The chair then conducts an investigation. The chair puts the member or appointee on notice, gives the member or appointee opportunity to respond. If the chair thinks it can go forward, it then again has to go before the board. And nothing happens without a majority vote of the entire board. Again, I'm more than happy to entertain the independent committee.
To even move forward with an investigation?
I was just gonna say that. Who initiates? I mean, the chair could initiate the investigation without the board's knowledge?
And that's just not right, in my eyes, that one individual makes a decision, okay, I'm going, I'm going forward. And I'll tell you a story, back within the last 10 years, that happened in this community, that somebody wasn't liked by other members, it was an appointed position, and they conducted an investigation on that person. And I was terribly upset about it, but that's the way it went.
Yeah.
Because there was a political dispute among the folks that sat on this board. They went after somebody, and that's just not right.
Oh, I agree entirely.
So, correct if I'm wrong, but, so if Chris decides he doesn't like me, and he decides to do a, but, and he decides to do an investigation on me.
You bring that to the board.
So, well, no, but if he decides to bring an investigation, you know, whatever, but then he has to go to the board with the entire investigation anyways, and then the board would have to move forward, correct?
Right, well, I'm just saying.
So, then what?
You initiated, were you initiated by bringing it to the board, not initiated by going after the.
My concern is that it's the first step should not be an investigation to decide whether or not it goes to the rest of the board. That a complaint is made, and then somehow, there should be a process to decide, okay, that reaches a level that we need to go to another step. And then, who conducts that investigation? I don't know. The last time it was done, it was done by town council.
Town council does assist in the investigation upon request of the chair. I'm happy to entertain and draft something incorporating an independent ethics commission, if that's what the board so desires. We're happy to do so.
I would just throw that out as an idea.
Oh, of course. I guess that what I can speak to, which I think is most useful, is how this is currently playing out, in my experience. And again, maybe to alleviate some of your concerns, that the language of the enforcement process is such that the chair is the one to whom the allegation is reported. But the language is that if someone's made aware of any type of unethical conduct, or an appearance in propriety, or something like that, and the chair then makes, again, makes his determination after investigating, then it always goes before the full board. Nothing can happen, no censure. The board, once the chair puts it before the board, the entire board could simply say, I don't think there's anything here, this is completely baseless, I think the chair was mistaken, for example, in his finding.
But by that point, investigation is what it is.
But it works, it couldn't have the potential to work the other way, where if a chair is so disposed to protect someone that's a friend, the other four members might never hear about it.
Correct.
It wasn't reported.
That works that way, too.
Yeah, that would be assumed that the chair. I think, I think the concern goes both ways.
Yes, of course.
In our, in our case, you know, because we have seen oddities on this table in the past, it ought to be that, you know, we all take a part in the entire process. At least I'm, I mean, I'm comfortable, you know, with saying that, just for everybody's sake. You know, why, I, you know, not that I wouldn't accept the burden, but, you know, I just assume have, in most cases, in, you know, absolutely in the last few years with this board, we handle most everything that way, where we, I'm happy to make a decision, but I want input from, you know, David Arm and Justine, Melissa, whoever else is sitting in these chairs, to even start the process. So, if there's, if there's language we can put there to, you know, to protect the process from the first step, in either way, I'm happy with that. It's fine. I prefer that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know I said I wouldn't say anything.
I knew, just.
There's money on it.
Justine told me that, too. She wasn't gonna say it either, but here we are.
It's really impossible. But maybe, here's a practical approach, because I get, I've also seen a lot of different politics that come into play, and really strong chairman, and, you know, that kind of thing. But maybe we could say that at that initial step, so a complaint gets filed, that gets submitted to the board, and the board convenes a meeting to determine whether an investigation could be undertaken, and then the board could designate one of its members, and then there would have to be consensus from the board. And the reason why I'm suggesting that, as opposed to having the board meet, sure, you can meet an executive session, but you still have to deal with all the complications of an open-meeting law when you're dealing with a body, right? So, it would be protected to some degree, but you still have to create minutes, and post meetings, and do all of those things, rather than have the flexibility that an individual could have. So, the board could, at any given time, depending upon the nature of the complaint, designate town council, designate the town administrator, but we could spell that kind of process out, and then you don't have to deal with, you've created a subcommittee, or a separate committee with this ethics commission that you suggested, Selectman Gavin, or even dealing with this particular body in an executive session. Then, of course, the final decision would then come back to the board for action. Does something like that make sense?
As I, you know, quickly think through your proposal, again, if you have that one situation where one person.
That's true, too.
And you bring it to the board, four to one, you lose, and it's going forward to an investigation. It doesn't get you away from that.
Yeah.
From that, you know, protection of the individual, the opposition, is what really where I'm, you know, the one person who's considered to be the troublemaker. That's the.
Did you have a question?
I do. I'm just curious, I mean, the people put the selectmen in power, you know, we vote for you. And it seems to me that if there's an issue, it shouldn't necessarily be up to the selectmen to choose whether or not a selectman stays. It also, if there was this board of ethics, or, you know, working group, what it allows is the selectmen can continue their work, they're not implicated, there's no bad feeling afterwards, it is a clean bill of health, the select people are all, they're really going on their way, you know, and it takes it back to some group of people.
Our charter doesn't allow us to remove somebody. There's language, there's language in this that says removal, but by charter, we can't. So, what you're saying will take place.
All these other things are embarrassing, you know, it's taken out of the hands of the board and back in the hands of people, so the subset responsible.
Okay.
But you're talking specifically about the select board, well, this is also, it also covers everybody else that's been appointed by the board, so that's a different situation then.
Yes. So.
Again, we're happy to draft whatever language the board sees fit.
Well, maybe we could put something in there where it says if it is, if the investigation is on one of the members of the board, I mean, at that point in time, maybe we could have a mission just for that one, as opposed to anything else, no?
I just don't know that, I just don't know that to David's point, that it, you know, the example David gave, that someone went after somebody who was an appointee for a political reason or a personal reason.
Exactly.
You could also, you could do, you could go that route, or you could also, you know, as a chairman, you could say if something came to me, and it was someone who's my friend, or someone who I, is a, you know, political ally of mine, or any chair could say, oh, it's okay, you know, brush it away, and that's not the goal. So, I understand what David's saying, I agree 100%. The, you know, the, I haven't counted the number of times that it just says chair specifically, but I'm happy to make, whoever says chair, the board or some other.
So, do you also agree with the appointing a commission? Is that what you're saying?
I don't want a commission at all. I think we have too many commissions, too many committees, too many subcommittees. We have too many of those things in Maynard right now. I can't keep them straight.
That's the problem.
And I think that that's why we're here, because we've had some issues in some of those places, and I think there needs to be a way to. those places, and I think there needs to be a way to address them without having another commission.
And you can't turn it over to the town administrator, because you might have a town administrator that does not like that individual, and suddenly, you know.
I think at some point, we have to trust the people, A, that we put into office, and B, that we hire. So I understand what you're saying, but I also think that, I'm, personally, I'm not ready to vote on this tonight, because I'd like to look into it a little bit more. But I do think, and I know that you're, I know, you're bringing up some good points, David, but I also feel like, I feel like we could come up with those what-ifs for pretty much anything. And nothing's going to be completely ironclad, but we need to do our best, and we need to, you know, we need to recognize that we are, in the year 2020, we are moving forward with people, and we're moving forward with our, you know, hires, and people that are on the board, and people who are, you know, in administration, and we need to trust them. And I think that's, to me, that's actually really important as well.
So, along, so, in following up with that, I think this only applies to appointed, appointed public service committee members, right? It does not apply to town employees, it does not apply to town administration.
Because you have your own.
It applies to, it applies to those committee members across the town that we appoint, and we have authority over.
That's good clarification.
So that's all, that's what we're talking, as well as, as well as any discussion that takes among ourselves, and, you know, for ourselves, our rules should be the same as everyone else's, in the sense that we, you know, how we handle a complaint.
And for what it's worth, as far as this has played out in my experience with this policy and this enforcement mechanisms, the chair has, of his or her own volition, designated town council, or in some cases, a police chief to conduct an investigation. And again, we can play with some language, but the investigation is going to fall on someone.
A couple of points of clarity. So, let's say the chairman or another board member, if that's the way we go with this policy, initiates that investigation from whatever party's going to be the investigating party. Does that decision need to be made public to the board per these policies, the decision to move forward with an investigation?
As this one currently functions, what happens is that the chair, upon being made aware, drafts a letter putting the alleged party on notice. The person, and then.
Is that letter shared with the board?
The letter is not shared with the board until the alleged party has an opportunity to present any exculpatory evidence and have a say.
Can that be done in?
Nothing goes to the board itself without the alleged party having a say, and then.
Can that be done in executive session? Because I know it's a little bit tricky when you talk about personal and character and whatnot. I know, one, you have to inform the person you put on speaking of.
Under exception one, you can have a complaint against a public official fall under the executive session exemption.
Would we have to post on the agenda who the person is?
So there is a, interestingly enough, the most common practice is to post the name or the position, because that's what the Attorney General encourages, but there are decisions from the DOG which indicate that if the purpose, namely protecting the individual's privacy, would be undercut by posting their name, you cannot post it. So you'd have to look at the facts at the time, but.
Okay.
Those decisions, I like not to post the name.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So this, just as to how it's been played, it's played out currently, so only once the alleged party has a chance to rebut the allegation, does the chair, whoever's investigating it, then give the findings to the board.
Okay.
So it's not as if somebody, I mean, there is a modicum of due process built in here. The alleged party does have a say and an opportunity to present exculpatory evidence before the board hears of anything. And then again, once the board receives that, then a session is held, and they get to, you know, hear from that person themselves, and only after that would they be able to decide whether censure or some type of consequence, or whether it's baseless, or whether it's substantiated.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I also concur that although an ethics commission is an option, it's not what I would advise at this time, only because it is an extra step that they themselves would have to be appointed by, I suppose, not disappointing authority, nor to have some sort of separation, perhaps the town moderator, but that would, that's extra steps that I think are not necessary at this time.
Yeah, okay.
My suggestion of that was just as a.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Toss-out, as a potential alternative approach.
And of course, here's the hope that you'd never have, that we never have to use it.
Well, that's true. That is the hope. But when you have an established policy, and then something happens, and the policy isn't protective of the individual, and that's the one that I worry about personally. I worry about the accused that has rights and might just be being accused because of peripheral issues. That's the problem.
Of course. And again, which is why in the enforcement process, we have built in that opportunity to rebut, respond, and present exculpatory evidence before they go, if they're denied that opportunity, it doesn't go to the board, as it's written currently.
So when you rebut, when the person alleged has the issue on his body, you rebut it too, the person investigating it?
Correct.
So it's just them two? There's no other third party independent being there with them? Because then you have, like, say I'm on the board, and someone who doesn't like me investigating me, I give them all the information in the world, get a look at it, and just say, no, that's not good enough, we're still going through. There's not another person there, you know, it's a talk, it's just like sitting in a room, just you two. Hearsay, she said. I said one thing, he said another, what really was said in there?
It hasn't played out like that quite yet, but your concern's well taken. And again, the mechanism we have built in here to ensure against that is once, once that's presented to the person conducting the investigation, that is going to be presented, again, presented to the board, and that individual will again have a chance to present their defense to the board.
Yeah, because I'm in the position where if I, as someone in my job, I'm a supervisor, so I have to, when I investigate an issue, I have to have a person that's not even like related to either one of us. I hear it, it's an HR rep, or it's someone that's just there to make sure that nothing was said, that what was said was said under good hope.
Yeah, understood.
Okay. So, we could motion to approve this evening, Mr. Chairman, or you can, as some of the others.
Well, I don't think anybody's ready to vote at this point. I think we, I'm just not sure that there's a comfort level with that, you know, the language and the.
Correct.
The chair, you know, the shared responsibility of hearing the complaint and initializing the initial investigation.
We're happy to come back with another draft.
That'd be great.
Maybe at this point, the best, from what I've heard, is that the, one of the, a possible solution would be to have the board get together, as Kate mentioned, and then the board collectively designate a person to conduct the investigation.
Just to be clear, that could be done in executive session?
Yeah. And, because, and I really, and we'll come back with a draft, but I really want you to think on the alternative, which is, as the chairman suggested, the board do the investigation, and that, in my mind, I'm just visualizing it, and it's cumbersome, right? Because sometimes, where do these things normally arise, right? It's a Facebook page, that someone writes a comment that's, you know, inappropriate, racially charged, or something really horrific. Are you going to, at the board meeting, like, go on Facebook?
I would think it as a board, that we would absolutely, you know, rely on the people who have investigative experience.
Yeah.
You know, yourselves, the Maynard Police Department, or somebody that has investigative experience, and rely on them to make a decision. Or, like you said, we've had, in some things in town, we've had neighboring police chiefs look at something for us, or those type of things, you know, something so that, you know, why are we, what experience do I have? I mean, oddly, I do this all the time for, with the people that work for me, because they're teamsters, and that's my life, is investigating nonsense. That's my, that's my thing. So I have experience at it, but I would not want to do it as, you know, as a peer in the community, someone, a peer in my community, or someone that I've, you know, appointed for a commission or a committee or something. I would not want to do it for them. So I would, and I don't know if anyone else would, but I would only feel comfortable with an investigation being headed or led by our police chief, or someone along, somebody along those lines, other than us.
Other than a board member. So the takeaway is, the initial complaint has to first be presented to the board to determine whether an investigation should be undertaken. Secondarily, the board can designate a town official, or some other independent investigator to conduct the investigation, then that report comes back to the board for action.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm very comfortable with that.
I'm good with that thought process, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I knew, I knew we'd get you to talk.
I know, it's impossible.
Alex is like, what is it?
He's.
Well, we appreciate it, it was nice to meet you.
Language that we wanted to have addressed, just to make it clarified, that the removal does not.
Yes, the removal language, yes, that'll be clarified as well.
It's really important that the removal apply to your appointed bodies, because if you do have a finding that one of your appointed members was, yeah, but.
But, you know, in a community like ours, that's so small, one would expect that if something egregious happened, that we would be able to go to that individual outside of any formal thing and just say, hey, look.
Yeah.
You know, unless it's criminal, then that's different, but I'm talking about, and just say, hey, look, it just doesn't look good, can you please back away? And, you know, if they chose not to, well, then you have to go through whatever processes. But I would hope that that could be a discussion first.
Yeah, I think nine times out of 10, that's normally how it plays out, but I have seen people dig in in a way that's surprising. So, yeah, you're right, though. I think that kind of informal approach is probably done before the complaint's even filed, and even gets to you.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
We'll schedule us in the front room, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Yeah, you haven't seen anybody.
So let's stay going forward, I didn't see him.
Choice on tag.
Yes.
Team Tigers.
Yeah.
Good night, boys.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Launa, who's gonna roll them out? Who's gonna introduce Launa? Or we just.
There's no one.
No one introduced from Launa. So, Mr. Chairman.
So, yeah, I mean, we already talked about this, so we just read the motion and move on with it.
Right, so for the clarification of the public, the board does not make any, approve any motions in executive session, so.
All right. So, I will make a motion that we move to approve and consent to the town administrator's signature of the Launa Professional Personal Collective bargaining agreement memorandum of agreement, effective July 1, 2019, and ratified by vote of Launa Professional Personal Union membership on December 19, 2019. Give a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. And this was discussed in executive session, and therefore, we do not have a need for further discussion unless anyone has any comments to make. All those in favor?
Very good. So the full CBA will be provided to the board for signature.
Right, 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 thank you. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to accept and approve draft control Y. amend bylaw chapter 21, nuisances as shown, move article forward to FinCom for review and comments. And a motion to accept and approve draft control Z. amend bylaw chapter 24, to dog owners' responsibility bylaw, as shown, move article forward to finance committee for review and comments. Do you have a second on those?
Second.
Thank you.
Greg, on these bylaws that are being proposed here, are there any significant changes? And the reason I bring this up is because, remember, the past years now, we've had things go to town meeting, and we say, oh, jeez, we never knew that, and this is our chance to ask questions. And this is our chance to, I know we're only sending it to the finance committee for their recommendation or whatever. But by sending it there, we don't have another say, and the board may disagree with some of this stuff that's on there. What's significant about this?
I have to admit, unless, Megan, you're familiar, I'm not familiar.
I found that the sponsor comments at the bottom pretty much summarize what the main, what the main differences are. So for, I think, control Y, for the nuisances.
It was mostly the violation, I think, the fines.
Yeah, that one is to kind of clarify, it was a wide range, it was $5 to $300, so to kind of like spell that out a little bit. To delete the section on blight, because as you mentioned, you know, that has come up at a recent town meeting, the adoption of 41, chapter 41, minimum property standards of commercial industrial properties. So, that seems to be the main change there. And then.
So they reorganized it, they. That's, I'm trying to figure out what they're, and listing a specific fine for a given bylaw violation, rather than, okay, I got it. Okay.
Also, you don't need to approve this this evening. We could have Bill Coleman or another member of the bylaw review committee come and explain further.
And I'm assuming they got their, they did their homework on the, on where those fines should be versus, you know, from other communities, and that we're not way overvaluing or undervaluing what those fines should be.
That's my understanding, yeah.
I'm sorry.
But again, I don't want to speak for the, for the committee.
No, I understand.
So, yeah.
And the second one, draft control Z, that one clarified licensing and fee requirements for dog owners 70 years and older, and for owners of service animals. So I don't know if that had been really clarified, in that the definition is consistent with Americans with Disabilities Act.
Looks like those are pretty straightforward changes for that one.
It's.
All right.
So, yeah, I don't know, it's just quite strange. No person should throw stones, snowballs, sticks, or other projectiles, no kick a football, no play any game in which a ball is used, no fly a kite or balloons. Okay, I can get shooting a bow and arrow or firing one again, on any public way of the town. So my kid can't, you know, if I had a kid, he couldn't play football in the street anymore?
I think it's more that you can't throw a football at a car, or a snowball.
It says, though. It says.
I know.
I mean, I'm.
I, I.
It just, it just seems, all right.
Well, actually, the question is, did that bylaw, did that bylaw already exist?
Why don't we have someone come in? Let's, do you know if that existed before? Do you know?
Nuisance bylaw?
No, the one that says section nine, no person should throw stones, snowballs, sticks, or other.
I'm not sure. I don't.
It just seems like an interesting.
Yeah, well, I can invite Bill Coleman or another member.
Yeah, that'd be nice. We can talk about that, these two there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'll remove my, I'll remove the motion. Resign the motion.
You gotta play street hockey, because you can't obstruct the street.
Yeah. It just seems, mm-hmm. All right. Budget, budget, budget?
All right, very good.
Sir?
So my budget message was provided to the board, finance committee, school committee, capital planning committee, and if it's not already, will be made public on the town's website shortly, under the board's segments webpage specifically, they, you have a, you have a budget section, so we'll put it there for FY '21. So I'm not going to go into detail, obviously, because it was about five or six pages, but the budget process proceeded similar how it had in the year before, my first year, so this is my second year with the budget, beginning like any other organization would do, looking at revenue, getting projected new revenue, and then offsetting it with whatever budget demands we may have. Certain assumptions were made, and then, and then as the budget developed, and then we had more accuracy with our projections, we were able to adjust our budget. But as of January 21st, you can see what my budget recommendation may be. There may be some extraordinary revenue that was not able to be projected yet, marijuana is one of them, for the development of the 111 Powder Mill Road owned by the, and I can't recall the proper name of the firm, that. can't recall the, the proper name of the firm that, that bought that, but it's the Chinese International School, so maybe there could be more revenue came in that is not incorporated in the budget at this time. Also, at the time, I didn't have the budget proposal from the governor, so my budget was submitted on the 21st, and the governor announced his budget on the 22nd. However, fortunately, Mike, Finance Director Mike Guzzo and I recommend a level fund of the, what's called local aid, so it's state, state money coming. We didn't increase it over last year, and sure enough, came in to be about a wash for what, for what the governor's proposing. And that's also included for the, for the board to consider here. Another item that we still don't have the, the knowledge of, and this, and this I alluded to in the, in the, in the notes section of the board packets, is we don't know what the health insurance number is going to be, so at the Massachusetts Municipal Association's annual conferences last weekend, Maya, who's the, kind of the insurance provider that is affiliated with that association, and their health insurance provider, they gave an average amongst its pool of a couple, maybe 200 or so clients, of, of a expected increase of 3.7% for health insurance. Mike and I had budgeted 7% increase. So if we come in less than seven, which hopefully 3.7% does indicate, that'll be good, so that'll be, that'll be money to the black, but, and then it'll be, Mike and I can provide recommendations to the board as to what to do with that money. Options may include, don't spend it, so if the money comes in, you don't have to spend it, which means a less impact for the tax levy, or, or it means meeting some of the requests from certain departments that requested more than what Mike and I had budgeted for, both on the town side and for the school committee. Another thing to highlight is a couple of additions to the capital plan, following my, my, my report. One was, the school, school department requested $27,000 to fund replacement of the smart projectors at the elementary school. I offered the, the option to pay for that through capital stabilization. Additionally, as a point of clarification, I did request that the $13,000 of revenue beyond what Sterling Golf Management is required to give to the town, which is, is then meant to be, you know, back into the, the maintenance and upkeep and, and capital improvements to the golf course, that money is set aside specifically for the golf course, I just am alluding to the fact that I did in fact ask Sterling Golf to raise that check for their contract. And we got the check, Becky's whispering.
Yay.
I also want to point out that the water enterprise budgets, so as commissioners of the water enterprise for the town as the selectmen are, Justin DiMarco will come in next week to brief the board on both water supply as well as water and sewer rates, and that, that's a, that's a consideration. So, no, it's not part of the general fund, but the residents and businesses pay the water and sewer rates, and there's a significant amount of infrastructure needs to be addressed. I could probably talk all day, but I won't, because there's a whole meeting set aside for that on February 8th, at, at which, Mr. S, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm proposing, I keep my comments significantly briefer this year than last year.
You keep your comments, please?
I'll try, for the February 8th meeting, and to allow for more deliberation amongst the stakeholders of the community.
Okay.
That's all I have at this time.
So Greg, is, is it fair to say that between now and February the 8th, whatever the date is, that we meet on the Saturday, that this budget, the line items will change?
That's correct.
That's correct, so this, we can start studying this and not expect to walk into the room.
Oh, please.
On that date, and see something different.
You go February, you support.
I brief this to the finance committee as well, with that same understanding.
So this, this is, I, you know, we all can start studying and seeing where, you know, we might have some questions. Looking at the, I'm just curious, looking at the capital list, I see that there are two line items for bathrooms at the two schools.
That's right.
Were those recently added?
No.
No? Okay. There's been some noise the last few days or weeks about issue with one of the bathrooms at the Fowler School, where the water has allegedly run without being shut off for an extended period of time.
I did not know this.
And I don't know if this is part of what they're talking about or not, but the allegations were that, that it was too expensive to repair, and that they shut it off at night because they couldn't leave the water on, they couldn't leave a bathroom, a restroom in a school must have running water, so the water ran, this is what, you know, obviously, it could be rumors, I don't know.
So Justin DiMarco is also the facilities manager for the town, I'm gonna have him investigate this, because I, I don't know.
Um, I don't know if it's true.
Was it Fowler?
Fowler is what I understand it was, in the eighth grade wing.
Okay.
And sixth.
Hmm?
And sixth.
Oh, and sixth.
And sixth grade, sixth grade?
Yeah. Girls, it doesn't turn off.
So...
Constantly runs.
Was it a sink?
Yeah, they can't, they have to turn, they can't get the pipe to run.
It's not a drip, it's a run.
It's a shh, it's on.
That's what I...
It just keeps going and going.
Okay.
That's what I've heard.
I'll have Justin look into it.
Yeah, they can't turn the water off, like you said, because they don't turn the water off, they turn all the water off.
So, well, how is that made aware? I mean, does anybody know how it's...
Allegedly, people have notified the school's administration.
Right, that's how I...
Yeah, but then they don't notify.
Well, that's, that's the whole thing.
So, I mean, that's not entirely true, I mean, there, there are opportunities.
Don't they have SchoolDude?
So, SchoolDude, which is their utilities management software, but also Kyle Brainerd is still the head custodian for, for the town, so that includes oversight over the custodians of the schools. So perhaps Kyle knows, but it just hasn't made it up to my office yet, so, but I'll, I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, okay, well, I'm, I'm a little confused, if they know, then how come it hasn't been fixed?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Greg doesn't even know if they know.
It's...
So we can't ask Greg.
But we know now. We know now. At least to look into it. The other issue that was raised was some, some office space that has had no heat for an extended period of time.
Where's that?
I don't know.
In the schools or the town side?
In schools.
Okay.
Pretty bad.
Okay, sure.
So I got a quick question in regards to the roof, the, the cost of the roof, because I'm not really clear unless that was already spelled out someplace, that, that includes the envelope?
Okay, that, so, yeah, I can clarify, so, um...
Because I saw the, all the, you know, specific cost, if we do this, if we do that.
So that was just the roof for the Green Mill Elementary School. The envelope, which does include the roof, but they didn't do the, the sides and the walls and the windows and everything, they just did the roof. And so, the, the concept is, we, we have a contract with this firm, and then they'll do the roof, which they did, and then at a later date, they'll do the, the rest of the envelope.
2.2 is just for the roof.
2.2 is just for the roof, that's the worst case scenario, hopefully.
And 2.2 is for the entire, correct?
Right, the entire roof.
Yeah, that's my understanding based off the report, but I believe the school committee is deliberating on this Thursday.
They're putting out some sort of notice tonight, and having a meeting Thursday, the 30th, which we're hoping to be happily invited.
They sent out an email about the, the whole thing.
Yeah, they sent something out tonight.
About the roof.
The roof and different meeting dates and different stuff, they just sent it out tonight, despite Ken's, Ken had some comments, I guess they ignored them.
I did too, and they ignored me too.
I'm not, I'm not getting into it, but anyways, yeah, they want to come in here the 4th to, by the way.
I'm inviting them because that, that would allow us to have the conversation ready for the 8th.
That's right. So, so, let's, all right, so you're gonna do, how's your, how's your, your town administrator report?
So it's, it's...
Is it in there?
It's so good every time, Mr. Chairman.
It's excellent, yeah.
Asking how it is, so...
Two, two points. Megan must be doing it, but yeah, it was great.
No, what, no!
She does her section, yeah, she does a great job. Come on, I have a degree, I type. So, two points for that, Mr. Chairman, if we are moving into the TA report, if there's no other questions from the board for the...
No, I...
All right, very good. So, so for the TA report, again, I always encourage the public to read the TA reports that we upload to the website following meetings. Secondly, we did get notification, Becky got notification, that Maynard House of Pizza got their, got their retail license, so I'm asking the board to sign the, the license, you will be approved for this.
Liquor license.
Yeah, the common victor winner, and you can sell, it's like a...
Common victor winner, which is last night.
And you can sell.
Beer in line, fall in line, what can they sell?
No, they can sell everything.
Oh, liquor.
They get a full liquor license.
Very good.
I took, we took their tip, our tip certification with them.
Very good.
There's a follow-up to that, because like the wrong name was on it, was that the issue? What?
No, that's the other one.
No, that was the other one.
That's the other one, that's the other, that's the guy from...
House of Pizza, the other one is a pepper, sweet, roasted pepper.
No, the one, the one I had to follow up was Avila, Avila Cantina, the, the one ten grill system.
That's right.
Oh, okay.
That had an issue with it, so I read that on the beach.
So I'm just, so I'm just asking the board to sign it. And then the, the other thing is, oh, Nancy Brooks is retired, so Nancy Brooks has been working for the town for about 30 years, over 30 years.
Good for her.
And she, she's the, she does administrative support for the fire station, and so I, we drafted a proclamation for the board to consider to sign. She has a retirement ceremony on Thursday, 1 o'clock at the fire station, and a follow-up one in February, and I don't call it a date.
Yeah, I didn't see the date yet.
Ah, it's here.
I don't know if they did it.
No, there is a date.
So if, if, if the chairman would allow the board to sign, then we could...
We did.
Fantastic, and then, and then I don't know if anyone's planning on going from, from the, from the board, but if not, we'll, we'll drop it off.
I don't think so, but, I mean, I could always go to the other one, if we don't make that one.
Or if you want, I can invite, we can invite Nancy to come in the next selectman meeting, whatever, whatever you want.
She won't be here, she's going in here.
Oh, never mind, she's out here.
She's already checked out.
No, I mean, if, you know, if, if there's gonna be something, if no one can go Thursday, we can hold it and do it for the one in February and plan ahead to do it.
Yeah, we'll ask her when she might be.
Just not a good week, I don't know if anyone else is planning to go.
Yeah, I have to find the date again, when's the, when's the first one?
Thursday at 1 o'clock.
This Thursday, yeah.
Lunch, lunch, free lunch.
The other one's February 20th.
February 20th.
I'm doing, I'm doing the azuca on Friday.
Me too.
Are you? Excellent.
Are you, okay, all right.
I got, I got a quick question for you from the report.
Go for it.
Because you did mention in the, that you met with the MBA in regards to...
Yep.
Getting their support for the new fire station, what was their reaction?
Good question. Well, but, how was their reaction? So there, first of all, there was like 18 of them, so I don't want to speak for every individual, but they were receptive, they, they, I also, they'd asked me what the cost would be to individual taxpayers, I, I laid it out for them, just, just as I mentioned in the budget message. I had asked if there is any questions or interest, they could, they could email myself or Megan, I haven't gotten any.
Yeah, I think Greg was also asking for, you know, if there are business members interested in getting involved with it.
Right, and I haven't gotten any whispering bites yet. So, I mean, they, they did ask, and I have to, of course, give credit to their, their president, Julie Love Gagnon, she, she both invited me and allowed me to speak, but they, and Megan was present as well. And Ma, and Julie pointed out that, that one opportunity to see the fire station is, is that it will leave vacant the existing fire station, which then could be potentially transferred into whatever the, the town, the community wants it to be, and one of the members of the MBA presence said maybe it could be parking, and I said, sure, that was an option, but, in other words, the, the conversation went, you know, towards, and I, I appreciated this, what opportunities could this new fire station give, instead of only focusing on the budget? Tim Hess was also president, and he's, he's been involved with reviewing the designs and whatnot, so I don't, I don't think I was surprising anyone there, so...
And, and the other thing you mentioned, I'm sorry?
No, I'm just saying it was like lukewarm.
Lukewarm?
There wasn't cheers, there wasn't booze, it was...
It was just there.
An update.
Yes.
And then the other thing you were mentioning, because I, there's, you said the, the status of negotiation between the TA and the school on, when it comes to the memorandum of agreement.
That's right, so, so Labor Council, Kate Veroff, I spoke to her today, and I asked her to keep, continue to follow up with their school council.
Okay.
So we're still, it's still in their court?
Kind of in both, I mean, I, I don't want to do us versus them, it's...
Well, no, 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 but I just mean, like, we gave them something, they give back to us, is that how it works?
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
So, that's where we are now.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, I, I noticed that, on a positive note, finally the police and fire could communicate with each other.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pretty good.
Yeah, 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 and it goes back to, just as we continue to address capital needs and whatnot, yeah. I also want to point out that I did appreciate Justin putting in all the detail that he did for both trash stickers, as well as putting out the good work that the crews did for the water main break, they were really late that night, and not only them, but we also had to contract out for, to get that work done, so everybody involved, really...
I, I know that the rollout for the trash sticker was a little bit of a hiccup, but I think he's doing a heck of a job in trying to bring us in line, you know, a little bit with the cost.
Yeah, I think it's hard, but I, I also think that he's, I, I, and I commend everybody, I commend everyone in the DPW office, because I cannot imagine the phone calls that they're getting as well. But, and I kind of think, you know, maybe our bad, I'm, I'm not faulting anybody, but somewhat town bad that we haven't been forcing this up to this point, but bottom line is the, these are the rules that have been written forever, so, and I do understand his philosophy with the, the 96 gallon or the 64 gallon, that it's harder to enforce the weight, it's easier for people to hide construction material, I, I understand it, I, I do also understand people don't want to have to buy new barrels, but we're supposed to do it that way the whole time anyways.
They haven't been taking that size barrel for a long time in most of the town, I don't know.
Well, right, exactly, but, but you weren't supposed to, and this is why.
No, no, what I'm saying is, they haven't been...
Oh, they haven't been?
They don't take it, they...
They never took it in?
They told me, the guy came up to my door one day and said, I can't take that barrel anymore, you gotta get smaller.
So it's not just as of July, as of January 1st?
No, no, it's years ago.
And I, and I think, you know, we, all these years, unfortunately, we, we weren't following up and, you know, what do you call, enforcing the rules, and that's what happens when you, all of a sudden, you're enforcing the rules, and everybody starts, you know, complaining, that's just the way it is.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, I have, I appreciate the police report was very detailed, and he's been, he did a nice job in getting that out.
Mr. Chairman, that's all.
All right, so, I have a couple, a few things, Fire Station Building Committee, you still looking for people?
I do, I need at least one more person.
All right, I'm just asking.
I'm gonna copy with someone later, but I need one.
And then there was an email that came out, the lady, the woman from the Fowler Park, talked about parking.
That's right, so, we bounce it to the parking authority.
Yeah, we started to, we addressed it at our last parking authority meeting last week, and the committee had a discussion about it, and I've been in contact with her myself, and we're gonna continue to discuss it at our next meeting, which I think is the fifth or the sixth.
Yeah, I, I actually met with her as well.
Oh, great.
She's really, really concerned about, she's very concerned, especially in the next couple of weeks because of Valentine's Day, where some people are parking, you know, where some people are parking, you know, there in front of her place. Um, you know, this is not a new issue for us relative to, you know, parking. It all comes down, very similar to the trash, it comes down to enforcement.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and, you know, the parking authority.
And there's no meters in front of that, in front of her location.
And that's something, but that's something that they're looking at, and I think the parking authority's addressing some of those concerns. If I'm not mistaken, is that?
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to be really methodical about our approach, and we're planning a, a new, a pilot to work on enforcement and make it consistent. Um, so, yeah, that's something we're working on.
Okay. And then, I don't know, I think we all got invited to the Fall Field Committee Meet, School Field Committee Meeting. It's on the 11th. I don't know if anyone's planning to attend, but if the five of us show up, do we have to post?
Only if we debate.
Yes, if you're, only if for information purposes.
Yeah, we, I don't know, well, I don't know.
I know I'm going.
I don't know what's expected, but I don't think we need, I don't need to go.
No, I'll likely be there, it's on my calendar, it just depends on what.
So I would advise if you're gonna go.
It's gotta be posted.
To not say a word.
Yes, if you're gonna offer your opinions, and there's a quorum of the board president, it has to be posted.
All right, okay.
So if everyone's going, then we should probably post it.
All right, okay.
And we have time to post it.
We have time to post.
Yeah, we should post it then.
All right, very good.
Um, and then the last thing I have is the joint budget meeting, which is Saturday, the 8th. I know that there is a member of another committee in town who has suggested that the school committee not make a presentation that day. I disagree.
What's that?
I, it's not my, and I didn't see a reason why, just, you know, who knows? But I, I think that that is the per, the proper time and place for the school committee to make the presentation. And I also think that people come to expect it, it's been precedent for years, why would we not? Just because, you know, one person's interpretation of the, the finite language of the charter says something that, you know, it doesn't say that they should, but I, I think.
I think it's, it shapes the overall budget, that budget for the town itself.
Yeah, so it just, I mean, you know, that's, that was a suggestion, so.
That was a suggestion. Also, the suggestion alluded similarly to the seating arrangement.
To what? Seating arrangement?
Yeah, seating arrangement.
Oh, because last year we sat across from each other?
So, you're right, so in like a U shape, um, I think the board, I'm trying to remember, sorry.
Yeah, board, finance committee.
School committee, finance committee. We had a couple seats over for delegates, so, um, Kate Hogan, who's confirmed she will attend. I at least said the initial part, and then I'll leave Cito and Jamie, I don't know, you know, Senator Oder just coming yet, but either way.
Department heads go.
Department heads can sit in the back.
They sit in the corner, yeah.
Um, maybe I can have Mike up front if he wants to be.
I think the seating, the seating arrangements are purely up to whatever you guys, where you put the chairs.
Okay, correct.
So what's the recommendation?
We can mix and match, it doesn't really matter, you know?
No, I mean, really.
If you, if you would like, I could share with the recommendation. So, so the recommendation was, in a little more stricter adherence to what the charter says for the joint budget review, which only describes the deliberation between the selectmen and finance committee. So if that were the case, if we were just gonna abide by that, then, then this recommendation would be to have just the finance committee seated across from the selectmen.
That's why.
It seems very adversarial to do it that way.
No kidding.
I don't understand, but you know. I, I don't want to comment, I don't, I don't know what, where that's coming from.
No.
But I, personally, I, I want to hear the school committee's report that day.
Me too.
It's, it, I think that people come to expect it, I think it's, it's appropriate at that time. I don't know what the reasoning is behind it, and, and I, I don't know if any reasoning was suggested to you.
It was adherence to the, to the.
To the charter.
To the interpretation of the charter.
I'm gonna go to the charter right now, just to see how it reads, it's just, it's, you know.
Could be held.
Even if it does read that way, the board of selectmen could say, as a courtesy, we would like to hear the school department's presentation of their budget.
Just like any other department.
And you're adhering to the, to the charter, but, um, just want to see what.
Do you know who's gonna make the presentation?
I don't, I don't know. From the school side, no, I don't know.
I mean, you're anticipating making a presentation, I would assume.
I, I'm sure they are. We haven't changed, I haven't read the agenda yet, I mean, I've provided some, some, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Can't quickly find it.
Have to look.
Finance. Submission of budgets.
He's looking, he's scrolling down.
We're just, yeah, we have the.
Joint budget review on or before the 15th day of February. The board of selectmen and the finance committee will hold a joint budget review meeting. In the course of the review, the board of selectmen and the finance committee may require the town administrator and representatives of town departments, offices, or multiple member bodies to attend and present appropriate financial reports and budgetary information. Is not the school committee a multi-member body?
Right.
It is.
So that's why, I was gonna say, that's how you're interpreting.
Well, the other part, and the other part of the commerce, the other part of the thing is, um, did he suggest they do it a later date? Well, I don't know what the later date is, and I don't know how many of four of us can go to on, on whatever the later date becomes.
Exactly, I think we're all there, that we all know that we're supposed to be there on this one, so.
What a selectmen and the fin, and the finance committee may require the, the representatives of multi-member bodies, so.
It was a recommendation, that's what I'm offering to the board.
Like, you know, that's where it's coming from, I assume.
Yeah, I think we, I, I would have requested the school committee conference.
Absolutely, I think they're, they're a large part of our budget, so.
Next week, what?
That's all I had, was those few little things, so. But anyways, um, Armin, maybe?
Um, not much from my end. The only thing that I have to share, because I think we're getting close with the master planning, uh, committee to, uh, I guess, come before the town. And they're implementing what they call the what's next committee. They want to come up with that idea about what's next committee, which I thought it was a great idea. Um, so they're working on those, those pieces, it's, it's in the final stages. And, um, we'll see, we'll probably gonna see it very soon.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
That's it. David?
Yeah, um, I don't know what's going on at the planning board meeting tonight. Um, but I am concerned about, um, Parker Street issue, where the apparent intentional violation of our rules and regulations um, relative to the times that they're allowed to be working and everything else. Um, very disappointed with the developer, um, in just basically telling the town where to go, knowingly violating at the police department's request to shut down, and continuing to work and taking on the fine because they can. Um, we should be concerned about that, not just, I, I want this project to be completed as soon as possible as everybody else does, but there are, you know, if I'm building a house, or if I have rules and regulations as a resident, and I just say, I don't want to follow them, um, because I have to get this done, uh, it just doesn't seem right. And, you know, when you have a, a business that is, we're trying to work cooperatively with, and they were all for us when they needed us, and now they don't need us, and it seems that they're, uh, you know, just telling us where to go, and very, very disappointed. They wrote their response saying they were not being offensive to the board, but, you know, uh, when there's a rule and they intentionally violate it, and tell you that they're intentionally violating it because they, they want to get their job done, well, maybe they should have better planning. Um, and it's very, very disappointing. So I don't know if the board can do anything about it. The planning board, I understand, was gonna be taking it up. Um, I don't know if we need to, uh, you know, if the, the fines aren't enough to be impactful, but I don't want to impact the average Joe, uh, because the fines can't be changed for everybody else. It just seems very unfair that, uh, that residents next door, um, are waking up on holidays when they're not supposed to be working, and they're working. They're way, they're, they're out there at 8:00 at night with bright lights that shine into their homes, and are asked to shut down, and they don't. Um, early in the morning, trucks are arriving before the arrival time that's supposed to, to be established, and they're out there, sometimes idling. Um, it's, it's just not fair. And, you know, for some people who would say, well, jeez, you live there, and it's right next door, and we need this as a town, someday it's gonna be their neighbor that has this, and should, would they expect the town to react the same way to that? I live fairly close, I don't hear any of this, nothing. I'm not bothered by it, I hear beeps and backup trucks and everything else, but it doesn't affect me. Um, but I'm hearing the stories from the people that it is, it's, it's really impactful on them.
You know, and I, I, obviously, I, I hear their concern. The one thing that I'm always looking at is, once that place is developed, you're gonna have a lot of traffic, a lot of lights.
And that's understood, but they're going to.
How is that gonna?
Hopefully, they will comply with the regulations that the town has, and that's the problem. If they're not doing it during development, and we have restrictions on the way lights are supposed to be and everything else, and they then, they just don't follow those bylaws, what do we do?
Yeah, and I'm just saying that, once that place is fully, you know, occupied, there's gonna be a lot of traffic and a lot of.
Nobody that I've spoken with has said anything different than that. They fully expect, once it's up and running, that they, they know what's gonna be there. It's the issue of, we, why have, why have rules?
Yeah, I agree.
If we don't.
No, I'm, I'm with you.
We don't enforce them.
I'm, I'm just making a point, it's just that one of those.
That's somewhat, you know, I, I think that's disrespectful to those that are just asking for the rules to be followed.
I agree.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Justine?
I even wrote mine out.
Oh, great.
First of all.
Just emailing to us.
The nuisance, the nuisance bylaw is currently, as written, is in, um, is section 10 of our nuisance bylaw now. I looked it up, just, which says you can't play football on the road.
Okay.
But anyways, um, a couple things, just the, we had a productive budget subcommittee meeting, um, earlier in the month. Um, we're working to schedule another one after the February 8th meeting. Um, basically, the theme is not new, we need to focus on increasing revenue, um, in the town, but we all know that, and I appreciate everybody's, um, efforts to try to make that happen, so. Um, I went to the Mass Municipal Association Conference, uh, last week with, and, with Armin. Um, it was informative, there were a lot, there were a lot of good workshops, and I had a lot of good conversations at the trade shows. Uh, one thing that struck me was that, when we work through everyday stuff in town, you kind of get lost in the weeds. Um, you feel like you're not necessarily making progress, you're not, um, you're not getting there, and, um, it was really helpful to me to realize that pretty much every other town in the state has recurring financial strains and capital planning struggles, and all of these other things, and, and we're not alone. And, you know, I realize, it doesn't mean we don't try, but it just means that we are all in the same boat trying to find this, you know, find the magic bullet for them. Um, the other thing that impressed me is when I walked around to the trade shows, there are, there are a lot of, a lot of different, um, even state organizations that nominate by, you know, and can tell me, I've, I've dealt with Aaron when Aaron was here, I've, I've done this, or, you know, the green communities person could not, you know, could not speak poorly about us if she tried, because it was, you know, how, how active we are at getting grants, and how we're always trying to, to make the most of our money, and, you know, we're always in there. And I think that that's really important for us all to know and for us all to acknowledge, because we do do that, and I think that's really important. Um, so, so I loved the, the conference for that reason, pretty much. Um, and the other thing that came up at the conference, and I actually did talk to Greg about it, but I wanted to kind of run this by the board, is, um, actually, on Saturday, they have the Maynard, the Massachusetts Selectmen's Association, that they actually meet and have a meeting. And at that meeting, they voted to change, um, the name of them to the Massachusetts Select Board Association. So I was wondering if that's something that we should start looking into. Um, I know it's a char, I think it's a charter change, so it would probably be something that we would need to do at town meeting, and so we would probably need to get that started.
Yeah, that's something.
Now to have a warrant article about.
That's something I was talking to David about today too, I think it's something we should really look into.
It's, it's not, it's, people are using, that, we had that letter from a woman this week that you responded to, Greg, that I piggybacked on.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
People are using that nomenclature as it is, um, it's really, there's no change.
Right.
Um, and to Justine's point, it, it does require some change in language in the charter and everything else, so there's, to make it official, you have to go through that process, but.
Right.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem.
Coincidentally, we are due for that process, the town charter review. And town moderator Dick Downey's already approached me about trying to, you know, how to go about commencing that process. And so, and Becky's done research, about the last time this board appointed a town charter review committee to see how that process would work, so that will incorporate that, that sort of revision.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, it's, that's, that's, that's what it's gonna be called, I mean, that's the, that is it, you know, no big deal.
Yeah. And then just quickly, are you, are you done?
I am done.